On the agenda?
Yes, it's on the agenda. It's also on, um, it's also on the district calendar, but it's on the agenda. It's right there on the agenda. That's how I've been directing people.
Oh, exactly.
Steve, we need him.
All right.
It's great.
Hello there.
Hello, sir. How are you?
Doing fine. Okay.
Hi, everybody.
It's getting our guest admitted here. Oh, you texted me at four forty-eight or four fifty-eight, Greg, wanting to know if the meeting's open?
Yeah, I was trying to go ahead and get my stuff set up.
Open right at five.
The meeting is supposed to start at five. Where's Steve? I'd love to have a conversation with him.
Steve, Steve had to give me a phone call a few minutes ago, so we, we, we talked and got things settled. He should be joining us very soon.
Hey, I'm on.
Yeah, hi, Steve.
I'm glad to be here so early.
There we go. But the, the, I, I see Gregory, I see Patrick, I see Jenna, I feel like Romper Room. I see Gregory. It looks like you have your quorum, sir, so the floor is yours.
We got it. I want, my thing says four fifty-seven. All right, we're gonna start the regular board meeting of the Gramont State Union School District. In attendance, we have Steve Schwartz and who else?
And Jennifer and Gregory and Patrick.
And we are at five oh one PM.
All right, so we're gonna start with adoption approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to support to adopt it.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay, all in favor, and we have to voice vote individual. Jennifer was. So all in favor, roll call, vote. I'm an I.
I.
Jennifer's an I.
Patrick, are you there? Okay, am I here for Patrick? So I'm gonna guess that's an abstain.
Okay.
All right.
Well, that passes, we'll move on. Reports, emergency powers utilized by superintendent. This is just a placeholder in case anything happened outside of board meetings that normally would have, we'd normally be updated on.
So at this point, no emergency powers have been used. However, I do anticipate needing to use some of those powers in the coming weeks as we will have staff that is working above and beyond their calendared and contracted time. We have committee members that are working on special projects and administrators that are over their calendar, so I do anticipate that coming up within the next couple of weeks.
And you've been, and you've been talking to folks on the staff team, I think, about that and trying to prepare, so.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, discussion on that? Okay, so Gramont State Principal Report.
All right, my principal report is in the board packet. It's on page two. The one, uh, there's some photos in there that really just, uh, I wanted to show, to just really put a visual and demonstrate a lot of the hard work that our reopening committee and Brian have done in gathering supplies and preparing for the fall. Um, above that are numbers. I mentioned at our last board meeting, or the, the last board meeting, that we had sort of a dry spell in new enrollment, uh, in interest in new enrollment for the fall between the March, April, May months. And I sort of had anticipated we might see an increase now, and it is true. We are definitely getting more and more calls about, uh, interest in the classroom. And we're going through all the same protocols and same procedures, like, just like we would during our other times, except of course, there's no tours being given. And a lot of it, just I know the board's interested, a lot of it are people who are moving to the area. They're coming from the Bay Area and migrating north a bit, and so that's what we're seeing. Not reflected in these numbers are three from this week even. So we're getting a lot of new interest. And that's, that's a good, because we have the space at each of our, of these grade levels, that's a good thing right now. And the only other thing I wanted to add with the Gramont State report is just, there's a lot of work still going on. Not only is this a busy time of the year for preparing for regular opening of school, but adapting things to the multiple options and multiple possibilities that are out there. So that's, that's my report in, in a quick three-minute recap.
Thank you. Any questions for Principal Pugno?
Just one thing for that, Carrie, as we're looking at that in terms of class sizes right now, in our discussions, right now, it's a, it's a range of nineteen to twenty-one across the board on campus, correct?
Correct. So with each of our grade levels, um, we look at twenty-one K three as being our cap, which would put in a grade level cap at eighty-four. I, I personally think it's a great idea to aim for twenty and then giving us a few, saving us a few spaces for people who have moved in the district or live within the district, who we have to, of course, uh, place in a classroom. And you can look at the numbers and we're, we're right around there with a little bit of space at each grade level. Grades four and five can go higher. And so again, there is space. Those are great sized classrooms. Very healthy and very similar to what we had this year.
Steve, you're muted.
See that. Thanks. Hillcrest's Principal Report.
Well, good evening, everybody. Again, for Hillcrest, not, not much more to report. Numbers have stayed steady. We lost a sixth grader, but then we gained another sixth grader back, so our number stayed the same, though we're not giving tours. Actually, when I was at Hillcrest the other day, I happen to have a, a family wandering around the campus, and I went out and introduced myself from six feet away, of course, wearing masks. Found out it was a new family coming from Summerfield, uh, Summerfield Waldorf, who was so excited when they found out they got in, and we were able to take them on a little tour around campus and get them situated and, and kind of talk a little bit about what to expect next year. Um, for, for us, the most part, that's, that's about it. I think we're gonna have some updates on some facility things coming up in our next meeting in August. We have an exciting new, um, something being put in. I'll save that for, for later on, uh, when we can do some pictures around that, but beyond that, things are just kind of moving around, and I just kind of want to reiterate what Carrie said about the, the hard work staff is putting in on all levels when it comes to, um, working to get ready for next year. I, I, I think if, we, we already know we have the best teachers anywhere in Sonoma County, but even more and more, this is just proving again just how fantastic they and thoughtful they are and all the work that they do.
All right. Thank you. Well, any questions for Principal Deets? Okay, Guda Report.
So it is my pleasure to introduce the new Guda President, Erin Helmer, and Erin has just joined us.
Wrong president.
Wrong president, sorry. That's, I'm sorry, not Guda GPA. Sorry, Erin. I got excited there. I ju, I, I just brought Beth into the meeting and I had Guda on my mind. Sorry, welcome back. Erin Helmer is the new GPA President, and she's joining us tonight, so congratulations on your nomination and election, and Erin, the floor is yours.
We're skipping a couple items there.
It's fine, we can go back. Just, just, it's okay. Go ahead, Erin.
I'm talking now? Okay.
Sure.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name's Erin Helmer. I am, thank God, not the Guda President. That would be way out of my, um, face. But yeah, I'm the new GPA President, and, um, I just wanted to come say hi. I think, I mean, I know most of you. So yeah, we are looking forward to getting our new, um, you know, pledge packets out, our new strategy for how we are going to fundraise in this, which will surely be a different year than normal, but we are, you know, here, we support you all. We're here, we have, you know, we are financially in a decent shape, so we feel confident that we will be able to support the district via either if enrichments are or are not happening, whatever that looks like, you know, if we can be of support financially, covering any new tech stuff that needs to happen for distance learning. We're here, you know, we are definitely, we, our next meeting is July twenty-first, um, on Zoom, and anyone is welcome to attend. We are definitely looking forward to getting a little bit more specifics from the district, from the board and the administration on what next year, what you're even planning it's gonna look like. I know there's a lot of unknowns, but you know, any of the unknowns you can share with us as potentials would be great for our planning for, um, how we are going to fundraise with the school community next year. So anyway, we look forward to a fruitful year together. That's it.
Thanks, Erin. Um, any questions for our new GPA President? You know, I just wanna say that, uh, before the outgoing president, we could do a little card or flowers or box chocolates and all that, and board members, if you're in on that, we can follow up after this, after this meeting, and maybe with, uh, check in with Dave on it. Seems especially appropriate at this time.
I saw Jen Kohlmeier had her arm up, her hand up too. Did you have a question for me?
I did, yeah, thank you. Um, I was hoping you could share with us a little bit about your plans, our GPA's plans for fundraising and your pledge packets this year. Kind of give us an overview of what that's gonna look like, if you have any sense of it yet.
We have zero sense of it because we don't know how much, we have gotten no numbers from, um, anyone about how much anything is gonna cost or what is even being offered. So we have, um, generally our, how we come up with our, I mean, how we've come up with our pledge numbers in the past has been, you know, we got a pretty detailed breakdown from Carrie and Will last year about what the cost was going to be, and then, you know, they did some math and we came up with that, with that pledge packet, um, number. This year, we don't have any numbers from anyone yet, so we don't really know. Um, that's, we would, we are hoping that that's going to be a major, our number one topic of discussion on July twenty-first, so I'm, I reached out to Will and Carrie to get as much information as we can, um, for our next board meeting, because we're hoping that's gonna be our number one topic of discussion, is coming up with our strategy for that.
Is there a, um, a timeline you have in mind for when you want to have those pledge packets out so that we can make sure we're getting you the information in advance of that?
I mean, I would say if we cannot decide on it, if we don't have anything to discuss on, in our board meeting on July twenty-first, our next board meeting is not until the day before school starts, so, starts. So, um, you know, we need, we need information before our next board meeting. So I think Carrie and I are tentative, we're gonna talk on Monday, and she thumbs up, so yes. And then Beth Dawson, who's also here, is my VP. So we, she's gonna be joining us in that meeting as well. And then, yeah, I mean, we're hoping, I, I mean, unfortunately, we fundraise for a program that we don't design, so we can only ask for what we get from the district.
Yeah, I, I just want to add to that and say, you know, our fundraising efforts and our pledge, um, programming and, and recruitment and recommendations to this, the parent body will be completely dependent on the programming. So as Erin said, we really can't proceed until we have a clear vision of the programming. And even when we do have that clear vision, as we know, the year is gonna be very fluid and it might be moving back and forth, so it really, there's just so many moving parts right now. It's not gonna look like any previous historical years. We just have to roll with it, so.
There's been some, um, discussion at the, on the committee level of having enrich, enrichments after, um, provided after school hours. Is that something that you guys think would be feasible, given, um, the folks that you have worked with?
I would, I would probably defer to, uh, Carrie and Will to respond to that, depending on the parent interest and, you know, parents, parents bandwidth for that in the new world.
Well, of course, but I, I was, I guess I was trying to wonder, I was wondering if the contractors that you have, um, paid before would be willing, have they expressed the willingness to provide those services?
So again, we don't generally, we do not engage with, we, we are payroll, in essence, with the contractors. The scheduling and all of that has always come from an administration level.
Okay.
So we're, like I said, we're open, we're fluid, we are, um, anxious, you know, we're, we are anxious to get to work and eager to get some more information, so we have. anxious to get to work and eager to get some more information. So we have these answers to you.
And Jennifer, just to add to that, the contractors have reached out to both Will and Carrie to some extent to let, let us know that they are flexible and willing to work within the confines of whatever program we put forward. So we have some flexibility. We're also working on a schedule so that, you know, as students, we can't keep them in class for four to six hours with a mask on the entire time. There's going to be, need to be some structured breaks and activities every half hour or so, so that they can, they can get out. And so we are talking with some of those contractors as well to give the teacher a break without a mask, to give the students some outside socially distanced activity. And we will be definitely talking with the contractors about those opportunities in addition to some online opportunities.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Anything else at this point? GPA? Okay. So let's go to Gouda.
Hello. Welcome, Erin and Beth. We're excited that you guys are on board. That's really great news. Um, our Gouda report was emailed to board members and members yesterday. In, in the report, we included a document that Gouda leadership came up with. We titled it Gouda's Guiding Principles to Reopening GUSD Schools. And in that document, we just wanted to communicate Gouda's position on reopening schools in a safe environment for teachers, staff and students. And we just looked at it as a starting point for future discussions that we can reference when, you know, we talk about what the plan is moving forward. Included in our Gouda report, we also included a clarification letter from Holly J. Mitchell, a state senator, that clarifies the intent of Senate Bill ninety-eight. And we also included a letter from CTA, President, Vice President and Secretary Treasurer about, again, reopening schools in a safe way for teachers, staff and students. And that's kind of the gist of what we sent out this month.
So I did get it yesterday. Actually got it today about midday. So I actually haven't had a chance to read it all. Is it possible to get the Gouda report sooner?
You know, we've been trying to work on that. A lot of times we are getting stuff up until the day before as well. And so it's, it's difficult for us to get everything out at once. So if you don't mind getting several emails, then that could be arranged. But, you know, it, it's just an influx of information for us that we try to respond to as well.
Okay, yeah, because with, with the one pagers, it's, it's one thing. But this was like, I think, ten pages total of what I saw between the couple of documents. Or was it all just repeats of one document? Either way, it was so much that I couldn't.
Yeah, it's a total, it's a total of six. Yeah, our, our wording was one page. And then there was one letter that was two pages, about one and a half pages. And then another letter that is about two and a half pages. But yeah, it's just, you know, Greg, you are so great about, you know, forwarding us really awesome literature that you receive. And this was our kind of way of thinking about doing the same. You know, we want to keep you guys in the loop of the things that we're receiving through CTA and other organizations. And so this is just, these are just also letters that we want you guys to be aware of as well. That we, we're receiving and we just wanted to pass them along with you, to you all.
And so Amy, just to throw in there, I know Jerry has a question that if we would like that Gouda information included in the board packet, I would need it the Monday before noon prior to the Thursday of the board meeting. So I, I think what I'm hearing Gregory say, and I think it, it follows from the other board members, they'd love to have a chance to review that Gouda information along with the rest of the packet. And so if there's any way membership could have that to us by noon, I can get it in the printed packet and it can also go out in the public packet.
Yeah, we can, I can definitely try to get that to you guys. I completely understand. Again, I can't promise that just because, you know, in a regular board meeting, we would be handing it to you that, at that time. But, you know, I do understand the importance of you guys having it, you know, beforehand. And like I said, we can try, we can definitely try to do that. We'll make an effort for that.
I had a quick question, Amy. Is the letter that you guys provided with your guiding principles from Gouda something that the parent community could see? Or was it directed to the board and administration really only as an audience?
Yeah, at this time, we, we were keeping it within the, the administration, the board and teachers. But, you know, further down the road, once we maybe have a better idea of the direction we're headed, you know, that might be something, or a new version of that might be something we definitely share with the parent community for sure.
Jerry, we can share the CTA letter with you, however, as well as the letter from the Senate Bill explanation.
It, it's more that I think some of us in the parent community really want to understand teachers' feelings going forward into this. And we're in such a strange time, it's important for us to respect and be able to know where, where you guys are coming from too. And that's the only reason I was asking, but I totally understand if it was meant for the other audience.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Gouda? Okay. So District Site Council, I think there's no report.
Correct.
Trustee reports. Anybody want to go first?
Sure. I, it's been a long couple of weeks. So I can't remember everything I said it on, but I said it on a presentation by SCOT today. I'm actually looking at a couple of the slides. And they really talked about the budget and they talked about distance learning and student engagement. And they've sent it out to everyone who attended. So if someone would like it, please shoot me an email because it's very, it gives them very, a lot more clarity over distance learning and student engagement versus also having a hybrid program. And they're not, the SCOT and the people who bring up a presentation for education are not quite even sure that you can go a whole year with distance learning. Or even if the way the budget is set up, if that can be what the format, they, the format that they're saying, based on the numbers and money, is really more tied to having your first goal is to have students in school and to have at somewhat of either all in school, a hybrid, but distant learning, if there's actually a clear guidance from like the health department. And I mean, I'm looking for that particular slide. So yeah, I said that presentation, L A A's may offer distance learning under one of two circumstances. And one, on a school-wide level as a result of an order slash guidance from the state or local public health official. There's details of how that can be done. Or for students who are medically fragile, will be put at risk by in-person instruction or who are self-quarantined because of COVID-19. And parents could define what at risk is. So there is the direction we got today in that presentation is, it does not seem like that the way the law is reading, read, or even being put together, we can go straight to a distance learning. So there's more information that's got to be decided on that. And there's more that's going to come out from the health department. So it's still very vague. So, yeah, it was a good, good presentation and I'd be happy to send everyone more of the slides that I received from that, if someone's interested in.
So let's continue that discussion later on when we, we get to the general action item on the reopening plan. Other trustee, trustees want to do a trustee report?
I also attended a SCOT reopening presentation yesterday. And it was, I was really encouraged that Dave and the committees that have been put together are really following the best practices that SCOT is being, is putting out there and that we're on the right track. So, you know, there's going to be, we're going to have to get creative and there's just not a lot of information right now. A lot of this is about being patient, but it sounded like to me that we're moving in the right direction and that was really good to hear.
Okay, thanks. Patrick, any report you want to share?
Nope, nothing to report here.
Well, I'll just say for myself, two things. One, we're going to be doing a, a little piece of board development or professional development later on. It's appropriate for closed session. So I'm glad that's happening. The other thing that I'm a, I'm as the president, as trustee, I'll just say it's, I'm sorry that we are not having the discussion about BLM resolution today. We, I have received a recommendation from staff, a draft that's gone to the rest of the board. We're going to look at that and I expect we will be bringing it for discussion next month, or at the next meeting. And there's a couple of reasons that wasn't on today. Some have to do with the fact that I've been spending some time with the medical establishment last days. And some that really have nothing to do with me, but I'm sorry, we weren't talking, we're not talking about today, but we'll get to it soon. With that, Climate Committee, I don't believe is met. Moving on down. I think there's one or two people from Climate Committee on this call. And I'll just say, I did send an email to, I think, Allison and Will about a, something on fossil fuels, that a resolution that UC did. And if you get a chance to look at that, I'd appreciate it. And we can maybe next Climate Committee meeting, that could be discussed. Master Plan Committee?
So as we're looking at the Master Plan Committee, one of the big steps that we have forward and something that the board will be considering tonight is the, the contract with the proposed architect, that's Quikraki Quokk. So QKA, that is the group that the committee has selected and is recommending to the board. The board has that contract in the consent agenda. If there's any questions on that, now would be a great time or we can wait for the consent agenda. QKA is a local firm, lots and lots of experience in California and specifically in the Bay Area. Myself and Principal Dietz have both worked directly with this firm. And they even have a firm member that has a, a child, a staff member at QKA has a child at Hillcrest. So familiar with the area. They are putting themselves ahead of the game. And they are right now doing investigations at our school sites with Brian, his crew and Counterpoint, looking at our classroom temperature mitigation issue as well as helping us interpret the guidelines for classroom ventilation to make sure that the filters we have, the MRF-13s are the best filters, that we're putting all of the things that we can in place to maximize ventilation in our classrooms. So if there's anybody else, Jennifer, if there's any else you wanted to add from that Master Plan Committee and that interview, other than that, we can move on.
I thought that they were great candidates. We had a bunch of great candidates, but I think that the committee was very excited to have somebody who had, you know, personal investment in our community. And they just had a great presentation and really had their eye on what was important to us. So I think they'll be a great fit.
Any questions or other comments on that? Okay, so Facility, Facilities Report, and someone asked page references, but that's page nineteen in the packet.
So Brian, Brian's report is in the packet. He has an update on supplies and services and, and the things that we're doing to make sure that we have maximum hygiene, sanitation, touchless items. The, the partitions are up in the office at Gravenstein. They'll be up in the office soon at Hillcrest. We have the large storage containers on the way so that we can make the appropriate space in all of the classrooms. As I mentioned before, Brian is working with Counterpoint and QKA on not only the, the temperature mitigation, but also ventilation. We want to make sure that there's a hand washing station available in every classroom. And we have one classroom at Hillcrest that doesn't have a hand washing station. And so Brian has created one. So that is being tested right now and we'll have that ready to go so that every classroom on both of our campuses has its own dedicated hand washing station. Brian has some notes in his report about the selection of the architect. And that's the summary of Brian's report.
Okay. Any questions on Facilities? All right. CBO report, Wanda?
Okay. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
One sec earlier. Okay, so on page twenty of the packet, the first item, attendance accounting, the annual reporting has been reported to SCOT, but we're doing it again. CDE changed some information, so we'll be resubmitting that shortly. And that has to do with the COVID and the pandemic and everything. So that'll be redone. The modernization funding, I just uploaded everything that the board approved last board meeting. The modernization or the ongoing major maintenance resolution and the plan. And Jack Schrader's approved it, the auditors approved it. So we're on track to receive those funds. They're down the road still, but we are doing everything that we're, is required. We'll need to review those plans annually. So that was the other, the last piece of that puzzle that we're just going to have to make sure. And Superintendent Rose already has it on his agenda for next year, next spring. CDE has approved the J-13 waivers. And so for all sites in the district. And the CARES funding certification has been done. So we are on board for an additional thirty-three point five thousand that was not previously in the budget. Those are federal dollars and they can be used retroactive back to March, the middle of March, March thirteenth or something like that. And, and going forward. So, and those are for, to mitigate issues, you know, to help students deal with the distance learning and however the district has to handle their instruction going forward. So that's being talked about, how those funds are going to be utilized. There's a, the SENIT's application, the contract with Centers of City Schools is in the packet tonight, but the application has already been submitted to CDE for the food service program. And let's see, what else? The FEMA, in order to receive FEMA funding, the district already had what's called a DUNES number, but we had to get registered with SAM.gov. So that's been done and I'm set up as the contact person for the funding that we would get through the, or for the DUNES information and through the, the grant program, federal grant program. And let's see, then item seven, there is projects, future projects. These are all things that are actually ongoing and just coming up at the end of the year. And I'm not saying I'm working on anyone. They're, they all need to happen soon. So those are projects for July and August. That's all I had for you.
I just want to go back quickly to item number six on Wanda's report. The FEMA grants allow us to apply for dollars to address any type of added expenses that we have to provide an educational platform moving forward. There will be an item that I'll be discussing with you shortly in terms of a large expenditure for materials and supplies that we need for the upcoming year that staff is recommending. And as we look at this opportunity, the, the FEMA funding is at a seventy-five percent rate of the money that we spend. So it's not a full and it is a reimbursement setup. So the materials and supplies, the storage cargo, the cleaning supplies, the extra things that we're spending on, we have the opportunity to submit a separate grant for each activity and being reimbursed up to seventy-five percent of those funds. We believe that timing is of the essence, that there is a limited pool of money. And of course, Wanda is on top of this and has it set up for us to be able to submit these grants as we confirm the expenditures.
Yeah, they are at seventy-five percent reimbursement. And there are some other federal dollars out there that we're learning about. The Learning Loss Mitigation Grant and the G E E R that are both also federal. And so possibly those could be off. And so possibly those could be offsetting the 25% that the FEMA grant doesn't cover. We get, we'll have to coordinate and just make sure that everything we're spending money on is, is for that, you know, applicable for that type of funding. And so when we do our reporting, we don't get dinged or anything.
Dave, when you say timings of the essence, is this really the same issue we've heard about in the past where if we're in line between, behind 20 districts, it's no problem unless one of those districts is LA Unified and then it's a two-year problem?
I, I don't think it's quite the same. Wanda and I were both very pleasantly surprised as we went through this process where we got to have a phone appointment with an attendant right away to talk us through the application process, to talk us through the details, to answer our questions. I believe it's just when we get that application in, we, we perceive that they're being attended to very quickly. And it's, it's a matter of when the funds are available.
Okay, thanks. Other questions for CBO?
Jerry has a question.
I'm sorry, it wasn't actually for Wanda. It was a question going back to the BLM resolution. I'm sorry to hear that you've been in the hospital, Steve, but I'm wondering.
I didn't say that exactly.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just wondering why this would be sort of not something that immediately went to the full board for discussion as opposed to sort of being held up by your availability? Because that kind of goes back to some of the gatekeeping that is a problem as to why Black Lives Matter is really important for us to show support to. And it shows community members who are all sorts of people of color and all of our community that we are in line and, and value them. And it doesn't, it doesn't seem right to sort of keep something off of there because the president is unavailable when this is something that should go to the full board, in my opinion.
Yeah, well, thanks. I think, like I said, I was kind of frustrated a little bit how it went down and I wasn't the only. I was one piece of a puzzle. I wanted to see it on the agenda. We didn't have something ready to go for a couple of reasons. We, and it's not on our agenda, so we can't really debate it unless someone during public comments brings up some, some detailed proposals. And then we could hear them, but we can't propose, we can't debate them or act on them as a board. So that's where that is. Couple, like I said, there's a little bit of story, but it's no point in my mind to get into that. But I do want to, it's priority for me and I think some other people on the board and I know other people on the staff and the community. So we're going to do what we can. We're going to look at what other districts have done and we'll, and see what we want to do that's unique. And with that, I want to get back to the CBO report.
I had a quick question for Wanda.
Please.
Yeah, okay. Wanda, I know that in August, I, well, I don't know, I think we're supposed to relook at the budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, now that, so we had to adopt a budget as a district. Now the state has adopted their budget, which is always after ours and some changes have been made. We're definitely going to be bringing another budget back. It has to be 45 days, within 45 days after the state adopts theirs if there are major changes. And so we'll be redoing it in August and depending on what the federal government does, we may be doing it again. So we'll have to see if there's major budget revisions, it may be, you know, like by first interim, we have a better idea.
Do you have?
Have something in August.
Awesome. Do you have any sense of the, the changes of the approvals that they've made in terms of funding for us that will impact our budget? Can you kind of give us a overview, just a brief?
Yeah, definitely. So basically, basically how the, in one of the workshops I put it today, it's like taking last year's amounts and carrying them forward. So we're going to be funded with the same per ADA amount. Our ADA is going to be the same because we're being held harmless. So it's, you know, exponentially better than what we got in May. But, but, but still there are, the big thing for us that even though our, our funding amount is being held the same, we're not getting the money. Everything's being deferred, starting, it's starting in June. Money was deferred this year and then next year, starting in February, like I saved a, I don't have it up. Part, like a percentage of the money that we would normally be getting in February is going to be deferred to November of the following year. What we would be getting in April will be deferred until, you know, like, so that's kind of how it's going to work. Well, we are getting the money and eventually the government will, you know, the state will make us whole. But, but, you know, districts that don't have reserves like ours are, are going to be in a pinch.
I, I've read some articles talking about how districts that are actually growing in enrollment are going to have, be negatively impacted by this kind of carry forward, hold harmless scenario. And, and we are, you know, we don't have a huge or a significant growth, but we do have, you know, I don't know, like 15 new students versus last year.
Yeah.
How is that going to impact us?
Well, it will impact us if we have a large amount of growth. Of course, we're getting, we're not sure about how the the attendance. So even though we have more students, we may have less attendance. It's, we're, we're just going to have to see how it plays out. It just depends. You know, there's a lot of moving parts there, but we're still being funded on last year's ADA. So.
And just to add a couple of things to that, right now, Jennifer, there is some trailer bill language that's being considered by the, the state legislature about that particular situation you're talking about. There are a handful of districts in the state that are facing a growth in their enrollment. And the current legislation and trailer bill, they would be penalized for that growth. There wouldn't be additional funding for those new students. However, there is trailer legislation that is going to be, we hope, specific to districts that do see growth. So if we wind up, as, as Wanda just said, with an attendance rate with an ADA and it's not the enrollment numbers, it's the ADA and, and our actual attendance. And if it's above and beyond what we had last year, we anticipate that trailer bill language will support us and other districts that, that could experience growth. The other thing, just to add on to, Wanda, go ahead.
No, we'll just have to see what, what comes out of their, you know, their deliberations right now. So far, we don't have anything.
Excellent. And just to add to the good news about the budget for this coming year in terms of the, the flat funding and not seeing that massive hit to our LCFF funding and the 10% that we had talked about when we presented that budget, it is really good news that we're going to get flat funding. However, there is a major level of concern over what's going to happen for 21, 22. And we are watching that very closely because this can't, this level of funding and the deferrals and the things that are happening that the state is doing, they only work in that short time span. They won't work across the two-year time period. So that level of concern for 2021 has been, at least in the short term alleviated. A lot of it is going to hinge upon what happens with the HIRA's legislation in the, in the US Senate. But that 21, 22 is something that we're keeping a very close eye on so that we can maintain our current levels.
Yeah, actually the, the budget that with this hold harm, with the hold harmless funding based on last year's ADA and based on zero COLA but holding still as far as our rates, that budget is still, and I, in one of the workshops today, I quoted, I think it was FICMAT, Mike Fine. And he said that this budget is hoping and praying that the federal government will intervene. That if, if the federal government doesn't come up with what, with what it needs to, there'll be a big impact as well.
So that's actually, that's something they said at the, on the call today about the budget is, you know, holding to numbers of last year will hurt some and help others. But at the same time, this is all a house of cards if federal money doesn't come through. Then everyone gets a whack in the middle of the year while your budget is already set. And part of the reason why they did it this way to, what I've heard from other sources is why the Hilton's budget was to stop the layoffs. So there were districts that were looking at layoffs. By holding it to where it is now, the layoff doesn't kick in. But we can have a problem in the middle of the year for many districts. And then they're talking about districts should be ready to take out loans, basically.
Right. And the other, there's trigger on, I think that's the word they were using, I believe. So if the federal government kicks in a certain amount, then that might, you know, they'll make adjustments to how much they're defer. If they kick in 14 million or a billion, I can't remember what the number was. It depends on what the federal government does, how much of a change it impacts the district, even in the 2021 year.
All right. So we're gonna, we're gonna have more chances to talk about the budget. I think, I'll just add that the legislature, some people know, got, they postponed session a couple of weeks today because members were sick and they wanted to keep COVID out of the capital. That means the bill load's going to be really compressed in the, when they do come back on the 27th. And in the meantime, the state budget, we're going to get a lot more clear on what the revenues look like, right? And that's what we were anticipating. Another, we usually have the May revise, this time we're going to have a revise after the revenues numbers come in with the personal income tax being paid later. So we'll, we'll know more. And hopefully that strong support for education that we saw with this, the legislature pushback on the governor stays, stay strong when they meet in August. Anyways, we're going to get more chances to look at that. Let's move on to some other exciting things. Superintendent report?
So there was a question earlier about having the page numbers. The page numbers are also embedded in the agenda as you're following through. So the page numbers of the associated documents are also embedded in the agenda so that you can follow through. We had some questions from the June board meeting. The, the, the burning question was the amount of time that teachers were spending with students. While we don't have an exact measurement of that time, we know that the vast majority of our teachers were doing daily in-person Zoom-type instruction. So our, our teacher survey that the board members have been able to see and view showed that information that we had, I think it was 87% of our teachers had daily interaction with their students. So that was to address that question. And on page 21 of the packet, you have the state controllers' office audit certification. No surprise, Wanda's budget that she has submitted has been certified by the state. And so that documentation and the letter that the district received is included in the packet. And again, great job, Wanda.
Steve, you're on you.
Hi. Greg's, Greg's always got my back. Okay, so we're going to go to public comment. Again, it's for things that are not on the agenda. So this is our biggest participation in a while, looking to hear what people want to talk about. If it is about reopening, that would be later on on the agenda. No one has to say their name and affiliation, but you're welcome to when you make your remarks. And with that, public comment. And if you, I guess there's two ways. I think if I see a picture and a hand go up, I'll try calling someone. And if, otherwise in the chat box, maybe Dave's monitoring that too.
Aaron has her hand up, Steve.
Hi. So I, this is about reopening, but it's more of from a parent's point of view, just communication from the district about reopening plans. I understand that things are in flux right now, but just having an idea of like what strategy A, B, and C are would be really helpful to parents. I know, I have a friend who teaches in the Santa Cruz City School District and they have a clear defined, like these are our high risk. This is what's going to happen in a high risk situation, moderate risk and low risk. I think they probably need to add a hybrid model, but just to give parents ideas about potential hours that kids would be in school if they're not in school full-time so that they can start planning for childcare needs. And then I also think it would be a good idea for the district to send out some sort of communication to parents about that mask wearing will be, you know, enforced in schools and to start stockpiling masks. Maybe give criteria about, about what masks need to do and that they need to in fact, cover the nose at all times. And also give a chance for parents to customize their kids with wearing masks if their kids have not been wearing them at all. Because there will be, I'm sure, a lot of feedback from parents saying that their kids can't do it for extended periods of time. So I think that having some communication around those topics would be really helpful for parents.
Thanks. So we're gonna, other comment on items not on the agenda?
Beth has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. I am going to comment on the Black Lives Matter resolution and statement. I shared an email today or yesterday, losing days, with all of you. The board and Superintendent Rose, just sharing my disappointment because so many resources were shared that it was essentially a copy and paste for you to be able to put something together that could be brought today to discuss, to edit, to show your community of whom you serve, that you care about them. Even if a resolution couldn't be presented today, at least something coming from the district from compassion and empathy for a community that is constantly ostracized for who they are just because of their skin color. I find it embarrassing. I find it very sad and I'm extremely disappointed. That is all.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Jerry has her hand up.
Mine is also on the Black Lives Matter. I think that my concern on this is it, the answer that you gave earlier was concerning to me because when I attended the last session, I had an understanding that it would be on this agenda. It was left off the agenda. It sounds like on purpose, on, so that we couldn't talk about it. And I, again, feel like that's part of the reason why there is a Black Lives Matter movement out there right now. It's because for too long, too many years, it's been like this, right? This is the same district where I attended a school board meeting two years ago where someone used the term separate but equal. And nobody heard that dog whistle language and commented on it, except me at the time. And it made me very uncomfortable. And I think that we need to be aware of that. And being aware of that requires us to talk about it and consistently trying to move the goalposts or punt things forward on a topic like this only causes people to feel more resentment and feel more ignored. And I just, I'm upset and I'm sorry. I just needed to share. Thanks.
The other thing I'll say on this is, you know, this is something we can, we will do some committee level work on in, before another meeting. So if you are members in the parent community or the staff that want to look at a draft of what we would be bringing to the board for consideration discussion, please let me and Superintendent Rose know who wants to be part of that, who wants to help us prepare for a successful thing at the next meeting, successful action. Any other public comment?
For us to participate on that, we need to be able to know when those community, committee meetings are. And only the monthly meeting is posted. So I volunteered to assist on this previously. So I had resources also to share on it. So it's, if you're going to encourage us to participate, please make sure that we have the opportunity. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks. Any other public comment? All right. So in the chat, is there anyone else trying to raise their hand? Okay, so consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything off? Okay, so I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's no discussion on that. So I'm an I vote.
Gregory up in the I.
Jennifer Collier, I.
Jennifer Collier, I.
Patrick Lee, I.
Okay, great, okay, so that's unanimous, thank you. We're gonna move on to general action items, reopening plan for the school year for twenty 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 one.
So um lots and lots of information coming. There's a ton of information out there. I want to open with just a huge thank you to all of our reopening committee members and their continued time and effort in gathering information and putting their thoughts together. And just the impactful thought and perspectives and putting together data and looking at different district plans and the things that are out there. And also just just providing, you know, their personal impact and the way they want to look at this. So all of that information is going into this plan as we're looking at it. And it just, I want to open with the information that we don't know if we're gonna be open yet. We don't know what the situation is with the health officer. We don't know what mandates we're going to have. But if we are open, we need to be prepared with a multitude of options for all of our families. Because even if we are open, there will be some medically fragile families and some families that choose not to have their children in public. So we're gonna have to have a full distance learning option. There are parents that have expressed interest in some type of hybrid model. There are parents that have expressed interest in some type of full time learning where their students are on campus every day. And our challenge is we're not going to be able to please everybody regardless of what we do. We're gonna keep health and safety of all of our students and staff as our primary concern. That is our number one priority. Number two, we know what happens when students aren't at school. We know about learning loss. We know about those students who already have other barriers and challenges in their life, whether it be an IEP or a language barrier or not having a supportive parent at home that can negotiate a distance. We know that a distance learning model only makes it very difficult for them. We know what they went through in the spring. And so we are working hard to make sure that we have, we're putting students first. And as we look at this, we want to make sure that we can engage our clients and keep our clientele in our enrollment. As we talked about, we do have the ability to maintain the funding that we're gonna get from the state from this year. But that's not gonna be forever. And so we need to make sure that we have a program that maintains our enrollment and that that parents are going to want to look at and see and say, gee, I have choices. I have something that's going to be in place that's gonna fit our family needs, and it's done by some of the most incredible teachers in the world. And they care about my kid and they put together an incredible program. We need to balance all of those things. And the most difficult thing is looking at how do we balance those health and safety needs and the concerns and the the rising number of positive cases with the desire to get our students back in school in front of our our incredible teachers and engaged in our in our great programs and getting the enriched things back, all of the electives. We want that for everybody. And at the same time, we know whatever plan we put out is not going to be perfect for everyone. So this has been an incredible group. We have a decree that has come forward that has changed kind of the way we're looking at this. Instead of us thinking about being in stage two and stage three and what that means and who can be open and who can't. Schooling has now been decreed as an essential service. So as we talk about that stage two or stage three, that's no longer the platform that's being looked at. We are being looked at as all districts across the state and all schools as an essential service. The expectation from our public and from our 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 elected leaders is that we have education for our students when we open in the fall. And the legislation guidance is it needs to be in person to the greatest extent possible. And that is the guiding factors that we have because that will be audited, that will be looked at, that will be tied to whether or not we receive the funding that has been slated to come into our coffers to support our programs. That is the charge of this committee as we're looking at this. We know that we have a staff survey and a parent survey that has been completed. And one of the big challenges this summer is if we were to do that same survey again today, the survey that closed on January or June twenty eighth, we'd have a different set of responses from our parents. And if we did one today and then did do in two weeks and that from now, the odds are we'd have again another different set of responses. It is going to be our work over the next few weeks to put together a plan that we um share with the public, that we share with our parents. We have some motions and some items that we would very much like the board to consider tonight. It's about masks, it's about the Beyond the Bell program, it's about some other issues that we would like the board to give us the go ahead as a basis for our planning as we move forward. But there's also some unanswered questions. We are challenging our teachers to be able to provide instruction across multiple formats at the same time. They are only one human being as and try as we might, we haven't figured out a way to clone our teachers yet. And the budget and the and the the amount of resources we have are going to be prohibitive in terms of adding a substantial amount of staff to run multiple platforms at the same time. And again, the bottom line in all of this is the programs that we put in place need to match our population, and they are also restricted by the the physical space that we have. We know in our layouts, in Brian and his crew going through and moving desks around, working with teachers, making sure that there's space for students to be able to move around, for the teacher to teach, for them to be able to all face forward, for us to have appropriate ventilation. We can have a maximum fifteen students per classroom at Grabenstein Elementary and seventeen at Hillcrest. Now, given those numbers, how many parents are going to opt for distance learning for health reasons? Or that's the personal way they want to go about this? How many are gonna opt for other models? When we ask the board to consider some of the action we want to take tonight, where we say any time during classroom instruction, wearing a facial coverings will be mandatory. Any time that we're on campus in groups where social distancing is problematic, we are going to be wearing facial coverings. That is something that we want to put forward. That is the current legal order. We know that there's still going to be legal discussions at the state level. They could be considering flexibility about that. But we're asking the board to support the committee's recommendation that as we open and as we're still in stage two and have not yet moved to stage three, that as we have a rising number of cases, that that mandate be in place and we're able to enforce that. Currently, we have the enforcement of law to be able to 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 support that. The additional areas that we're looking at and and the challenges is the timeline in terms of this plan and being able to put the details together. We would like to have the next couple of weeks after we get these initial foundation approvals from the board to work with staff until the end of this month to talk about, okay, how can we actually deliver instruction to students in the best way possible? And in a way that staff is not working ten hour days every day to try to address all of our students in a variety of different platforms. Staff is looking at that. We're looking at the actual numbers. We're looking at our size, how many can we get in classrooms? What did the data, the survey data say? And so we're gonna have a bottom line start on that discussion with Guda and with our teachers. Our next step is to go through and and have an all staff meeting. Of course, we'll do it remotely so that we can address the self, the health and safety concerns. Because if we have a group of teachers that are anxious, that are worried, that have their health concerns, it's gonna impact their teaching. It's gonna impact the way that they react and the way they interact with their students. And so there has to be a comfort level there. We have to make sure that we have teachers that are comfortable with the the cleanliness and hygiene and sanitation guidelines that we have and that we have those masks in place, that we have a protocol for checking health of every bit, every day, everybody, every day who's gonna be on campus. That we're not allowing guests on campus for the opening. We're restricting lots of the other things we're doing, we're keeping pure cohorts. We're gonna do everything that we can, every suggestion, every best practice that we know of in order to make sure that the the environment is as safe as health and healthy and safety, safe as we can possibly make it. That will be our push, that's the information that the committee has gathered to this point. And so then, you know, that brings me to some of the specific areas, but I'll I'll stop talking now before I go into those specific areas to see if there's any questions just in general.
Okay, so Dave.
We have a question on the um chat from Aaron Hennar with the survey data we make public.
Yes, we're we're planning to post the survey data on the district website. We we're gonna have to go through and edit that data to make sure it stays anonymous because that's one of the conditions. So Megan the Wizard is going through and taking care of our data and cleaning that up and making sure that, you know, there there's no way to track that data to a specific uh person who has has responded.
So, okay, so Dave, what, thank you for that introduction on to this section. When we talked last week, I asked you to. If you could, you know, focus a couple of the questions you want to make sure you get board input on. What I heard you say was you wanted to make sure you got board input tonight on. Question about masks.
I have, I have six items for you, Steve.
Some questions about Beyond the Bell. Okay, so it's good to do intro stuff first. I um I I would add for board members, if you, you know, everyone's can say whatever they feel like. I think a couple of things I want to make sure we give input on before we're done is how best to present um this plan. And and also, when do we want to look again at it as a board at the plan? If if we're working through July, do we want to consider, plan on another board meeting before the next regular meeting? So let's let's have that discussion before we end this discussion tonight. So board members, if you have, you know, questions, comments right now for Dave, great, and then we'll focus there. Then we can see about some input from the the public, and then we'll we'll go from there and.
So one question I have for David, have you presented all the items that you want us to approve on? Or is there something still that you haven't presented yet?
No, um let me, let me look here. One of the items that I didn't mention is that we want to make sure, you know, as we're addressing the health and hygiene issue is we want to look at a shortened day. We want to make sure that we hit the core number of subjects. We we have the four core areas and we have the the minimum minutes that instruction needs to take place. Our proposal is that we open with those minimums so that, you know, we are hitting those core subject areas. We are interacting with students, but we also don't want to push the interactions beyond those minimum number of minutes per day. The other item specifically that I'll be asking you about is there is a site specific protection plan that has some components that I've shared with board members that we'd like approval on. And that will be the basis of our health and hygiene lessons, as well as any handbook entries that we're doing in terms of having a a special twenty twenty one COVID student parent handbook that is gonna have these guidelines in there.
So I want to, Jennifer, you you've been on the committee. Do you want to just add any context, comments, thoughts right right now?
Well, my 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 question is um in this document, it's difficult for me to tell which items you want us to review and approve. There's just, there's a lot of information here, and I'm I'm assuming it's the bolded sections, is that correct?
So Jennifer, as you're looking at the document, I want to make sure that you're looking at the correct one. So this is the document that I shared with the board the last few days, and I don't see that you're on that, but it has been shared with you. Let me share that with the room.
Let me pull that up.
So the the opening and preamble to this document is the the summary of the information that I've given to this point. In this table, the items that are in red are the action items for tonight. So I've covered the social distancing piece. This isn't something that needs board action in terms of the classroom maximum. That is law, that's what we have right now, those are, those are our classroom capacities. This is a reopening committee request to have the board make a motion to consider that all staff and students shall be wearing a mask at the time stipulated here. And knowing that we're not gonna mandate that that students are gonna wear a mask every minute that they're on campus. We will build in breaks, we will build in outside activities. We have canopies that are on order, we have shade spots, we are talking and working with teachers about doing some outdoor lessons and outdoor activities. And we want to move students in and out of classrooms and not have them in one indoor area for any great length of time. And our 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 goal will be about a half hour at a time. So that would be the first thing that we'd like the board to consider.
So let me just clarify here because I'm a little bit lost. So the document that was provided in the board packet is not the one that we should be reviewing. It's a separate document that you will share via Drive, is that what you're saying?
Jennifer, that's correct, and you and you have that document, I see that you're on it right now. This document was created because the original plan that we wanted to bring forward to the board, there were some items in there that we could not make happen. There were some things in there in terms of the teaching format and some of the instructional models that we weren't ready to to have an MOU. We weren't ready to get, you know, any type of um confirmation that it would be a model that teachers felt comfortable with at that point. So the original document that was gonna go into the board has been set aside. This document is taking its place currently, and we're sharing it to the board. And these are, these are the actions in red that we'd like the board to consider tonight.
Well, I have to say that since it wasn't in the packet, I did not um review it in terms of approving. So I I'm gonna need some time to do that um before I can make any comments.
Okay, so just to let you know, Jennifer, the items that are here were in that original document. So if we look at this section for the document that is in there, and we talk about facial coverings. And this is a much longer document, which was why I addressed it in a different way. That committee recommendation is in here. And you and you're right, that they're in bold. And so that's where that is, and that's what's in the board packet.
What do we want to do here? So we can go into weeds on a couple of questions and then see if where people feel comfortable discussing and then open it up to public comment one at a time. I think. Why don't we take the two or three of your areas that you want to make sure you get board input on? See what board comments there are. And then go from, go from there.
So the first item.
Then we'll go to the public. So shield, masks is one. My question is, and I give you a heads up about this, um we're saying masks, there's cloth, cloth masks, shields are something.
I just want to go back to that, I did not say mask. What it says here and what I did say is facial coverings.
Okay.
Because that's what's in the mandate, that's what's in the health order.
So where do those plastic shields fit into this? And is that a recommendation or do are those considered not um healthy enough?
That won't work for students because it is not healthy enough. We have face shields on order for teachers during their instruction when they're more than six feet away from students. There are gonna be times when teachers are gonna want to have their facial expressions, their pronunciation. There are gonna be times when teachers are gonna want to do that, they are gonna be supplied with shields. And then once they finish that form of instruction, they would switch to their masks.
Okay, so Greg, Jennifer, anything else or Patrick, anything else on this?
I don't have anything with items we've discussed yet so far. I have some questions related to um.
Do you want to jump into that or Dave, do you prefer to say something specific on that first?
So as we're looking at the Beyond the Bell situation, um we are following the mandates to have as many pure cohorts as we possibly can to maintain safety as we're going through and building this program. We are setting up a classroom design with our teachers where they have their pure cohort that they're instructing on a daily basis TK to five. We know that there is going to be more mixing at the junior, at the middle school level. We have a plan in place where we want grade level cohorts to travel together through their core level instruction so that we're not mixing classes across the day. That group of students would travel only with. That group of students would travel only with their other Hillcrest group. So a student that has Joan in, in his English class, Joan is also going to be in his science class, and his math class, and his social studies class, and that group is going to travel for as however long this health order is in place, they're going to travel as a cohort through those middle school classes. Part of that, keeping those cohorts and limiting exposure, is our recommendation that we not have a beyond the bell program open to our families to open the school year. So we would suspend beyond the bell to open, we would have a shortened school day, and knowing that our teachers are going to have double duty, they're going to have times when their students are not in class, or are, are doing some other form of learning based upon that parent choice, we want to provide a daycare option for those students that are enrolled in grab and seen schools that are the children of our teachers. And so that way, we can keep that cohort limited, it would be small, it would allow us to have the health and hygiene and ingress and egress training for that, for those students as well, as that group. That would minimize any type of grouping that we have, and it would change the feel for a group that can be over 100 children on a daily basis when beyond the bell is open typically, and that 100 children changes from day to day. So it could be upwards of 130 or 140 different children to a group that would probably be somewhere maximizing at 40, somewhere probably in the area of 30.
So I'm going to take the first shot at this. Sorry, Greg, is that okay, real quick? It feels like, to me, like, we're talking about adding a service of more childcare service beyond the bell for teachers, which seems appropriate and a good idea, but it also feels like we're taking away an important service that helps families that have two people working, or single parents, or low, low income families. And, I mean, obviously, we're dealing with a lot of situations where it's, these are between two or more choices that none of us love, but it seems to me like we want to see how to invest more to be able to, to add the service, make sure teachers that need help with childcare get it, but we're not taking away from others. And, and, you know, one thing I know we've had in conversations outside of the board meeting, Dave is, you know, part of what folks look at is are we spending our funding to serve low income members of the student body and people coming in from other districts on, on things that really serve? And I think that with basic aid supplemental or elsewhere, and I think this is something we need to really look at, can we find a way that our response to COVID and doesn't take away an essential program? I know my kids learned a lot in beyond the bell, and they also, before that, they had a lot of fun while their, both their kids were, both their parents were working. So that's my comment. I know it's not simple to respond, but other board members have any comments first?
Steve, before you leave that, can I, can I respond to that?
Well, we're, we're not leaving. I just wanted to see if other board members have any comments first, and then maybe respond to all of them.
Yeah, so just in flow, so if I can respond to that, you're exactly right. And, and my opening was regardless of what plan we put in place, we're not going to be able to serve all of the needs of all of our clients, and that's unfortunate, and you mentioned that as well. When we talk about supplemental funding, supplemental funding can't be used for after school care, that, that's not an appropriate use, but we do have other resources, and we do have other things that we can do. It's the balance that we have right now in terms of, as we mix that many cohorts, we have that additional concern that if our adult teachers that are a more susceptible population than our students, if we have our teachers become ill or can't come to school, that is a major impact on all families. If we have teachers that cannot come to class and cannot instruct and cannot provide distance learning, it's not just that one family or a few family or 10%, there's going to be families that are going to be impacted by this. But for every teacher that we have that can't teach because of a health issue, it impacts the entire campus.
Right, but teachers' kids are in the, in the beyond the bell, I mean, they're coming from different cohorts too, and going back and not, so I, I don't know how that solves that, but it, but I agree, it could get worse. Other board members, and then let's go forward.
So, I'll say this real quick, and my thoughts on the behind the bell, beyond the bell is, um, some of the things I've read is this whole idea of cohorts is something that has a great sound to it and actually functions out in, in the real world when families are pretty isolated. You could develop cohorts in that way. Once you put children into a school setting, the cohort thing kind of goes away. And the reason why I say that is, if you've got a family with four or five kids in our school system, and one of them gets sick, that's four or five classes, and if there are any siblings in that class, that affects another class. So, you know, I think the idea is, is a good idea, I don't think it's a realistic idea. And I'll, I'll leave that to others to make more statements on the whole separating our kids from child beyond the bell.
And Gregory, just to address that, in terms of the science and what we're hearing, we know that when we have that many students on campus, the siblings, the mix, all of those things, the factors you just said, that's exactly correct. The idea around those cohorts is if there is some type of positive case that comes, then the tracking of that case becomes so much easier and so much cleaner, and instead of having to shut down an entire school or grade level or multiple classes, we may be able to just isolate one or two families. And so that's the idea behind that, those cohorts. We know that mixing is going to take place. If we have all of our other hygiene attempts and sanitation in place, it's going to limit that spread, but if we have the pure cohorts as much as we possibly can, the contact tracing is going to be much easier and much more effective.
My concern is that this is going to be highly impactful to our parents and our community. There's, you know, at least 20% of our community utilizes this service, and it will make it very difficult for those parents to go back to work, especially if we're going to have a shortened day. It's going to be very impactful. The other question I would have is, you know, my, I think all of our focus here is on the safety of our, our teachers and our students, and I just wonder if this doesn't have to be a zero sum game. Is there a way for us to create a system of childcare aftercare that could meet all of those needs? You know, we've hired a, a large group of aides, for example, couldn't we have them doing some of this childcare, not in the beyond the bell facility, but in the individual classroom, so we have less co-mingling? Because in reality, with 40 kids co-mingling that are coming from all different classrooms, we're going to have that intermixing, and we're going to have that contamination. There's not going to maintain the cohorts that do allow us to maintain some kind of traceability. So my question would be, you know, how effective is it really to have 40 kids coming from all different classrooms into one classroom versus 100 kids? And is there ways that we could, as a district, get creative around how we're providing these services so that we can meet all of the needs, the needs of the teachers and the needs of our community?
So just to speak to those questions, again, as we talk about this smaller group that is the same group every day and not a mixed group, we have a greater ability to help instruct and do the ingress and egress, and to train those students about the proper protocol that would be in place in that daycare system. So in terms of mixing those cohorts and having behaviors that tend to make the virus spread more, we would have more preventative activities if we limited this. In terms of the other side of this, and, and trying to be creative and use other staff, we've looked at this in a multitude of different ways. Right now, when we look at our instructional aides and our classified staff, we are going to need those staff to be reviewing and providing support to students that are on distance learning platforms, and students that are receiving instruction during the day that need extra help. There's, there's that, that issue around students in terms of access, in terms of learning lag, and in terms of those items, and that becomes the focus of our current strategy with that instructional aid staff and the classified staff. So most of those staff that we would be looking, that would typically be doing beyond the bell, will be supporting teachers in terms of providing direct student support.
Here, so I guess what I hear you to say is that because we, you would maintain a group of 40 or so kids in that beyond the bell, then you'd have higher facilities to train them, because they'd be consistently attending every day, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So would it be possible just to mandate that if you are going to participate in beyond the bell, you have to do it every day? And that way, we, at least we would meet the parent, the needs of the parents who absolutely need it to be able to, to send their kids to school? Because my concern is that we're going to highly impact our community, we're not giving any alternatives. And, you know, it just seems like we could be a little bit more creative about how we're doing this, so we can make sure we meet those needs.
Right, and, and again, I go back to, when we look at the survey data, we have 80% of our families that have reported that this isn't a, a make or break issue for them, and another 10% that have reported that it might be. 10% of our families have said this is a really, really critical issue for them. And I go back to the instructional model and the aides that we have and the current staffing that we have would prohibit us from providing some other form of program after school, because we don't have enough staff. If the board wanted to direct more, more money to hire more staff and create that, we could look at that, but again, we are then going across that line in terms of mixing those cohorts and doing something unless we hire multiple staff and, and try to make that as pure as possible. That's, that is a priority, it's important to families, but the biggest priority that we've been looking at are the health and hygiene practices, and then the instructional model itself.
Remember, these kids are all going to be in classrooms together already, right?
In pure cohorts, yes.
But you're not going to be able to maintain a cohort when you have 40 kids mixing in a after-school program. And if you were able to, say, in the after-school program, you have to attend every day if you're going to attend, at least then the, the parents who needed it could use it, and you would have the ability to, or the staff would have the ability to train and set the expectations for the parents, so that they could teach those kids how to maintain distances and be safe in that environment. I also wonder if you said that all the aides would be required to support teachers to provide remote learning after hours, is that what you're saying?
The, the aides would be supporting the teachers in terms of reaching out to specific students that need additional help.
After, after classes?
Correct, correct.
I see.
So.
Well, your, your plan is to have teachers providing remote learning after the, you know, four-hour period?
That will be a mandatory part of what we do, because we will have a, a number of students that are on distance learning, and the odds are that we're going to have multiple students that will be on some form of hybrid. And so we need to have the opportunity for some one, some type of interaction face-to-face. You know, if we have a teacher that is not doing live broadcasts, or for some reason they're, they're not recording their lessons, we will have a mandate to have direct interaction with those students to meet the instructional minutes. And so part of that will be, will be during those after-school hours.
So, so let me just clarify, you're, the teachers who would be teaching in the classroom would then have to finish their day by providing a remote learning for the students who are not able to attend?
No, that's not what I said. What I said is that we're, we're trying to do a model right now that enables teachers to have that instruction happen at the same time for all students across all platforms, and we're going to try to maintain that. However, that becomes the guided learning portion of the day. When students get into their independent practice of those, of those topics in guided learning, there's going to be, there's going to need to be some level of support. And remember, as we look at the curriculum that's going to be introduced and taught during the fall, it is going to be very different than the rigor of the, of the curriculum that was covered in the spring. And so those are, those are apples and oranges in terms of the models. We were reinforcing standards, we were emphasizing engagement, we were emphasizing that type of, of structure in the spring. In the fall, the students are going to be challenged, they're going to be pushed, this is going to be new information for them that the instructors are giving direction on, on a daily basis. And so that guided practice will take place during classroom instruction, but there needs to be some form of, of independent practice where there's some guidance from the teacher.
And that will occur after the school day?
And that's the plan that we're working on. That's what we're talking about with the staff.
And the reason I ask this question is because in attending these committees, I, my understanding was the committee had suggested that teachers who were, had self-identified as at-risk would provide the remote learning component for all the students that wanted to do remote learning, and then, then that wouldn't pull the teachers in too many directions. But that's, that's what I took away from the committee meeting, but I just, that's not in reading here, so I'm trying to reconcile those two things.
Right, and, and that is something that we have talked about as a committee. However, with our numbers and with what we have in the credentialing, that's not going to match the number of students that we have, nor will it match the requests we have from our families for in-person instruction. So we, we know that we have some teachers that will have some health concerns, and will have to make some special considerations for. We're aware of that. But that, that, that has to be our tier-three response and not our base program.
Right, I do want to, if they were kind of getting into off of the beyond the bell program in this discussion a little bit, I kind of want to bring it back to that. I agree with a lot of what Gregory, Steve, and Jennifer have said so far, especially Jennifer with you talking about potential solutions, and I cannot encourage the staff more to consider more creative solutions. Dave, you and I spoke earlier about the survey, and, and you, you quote, you talked about some of the numbers, and I saw in some of the comments that they also have this issue. So 65% of the student, or, you know, the population of our district took the survey, 10% of those responded that it was a serious issue, but that's not necessarily, you know, representative of the number of people that are reliant on this program. And the people who are reliant on this program truly are reliant on beyond the bell, and we don't want, we don't want parents to be considering whether they can send their kids, you know, part-time to the campus. I'd rather that they be on campus rather than just taking a full at-home model because of whether childcare options are available, because they may have students in different school districts that may have, I guess I'm, I'm getting into details that I probably don't have enough information on, but we really should consider looking at expanding the beyond the bell program to, to, you know, to handle these students. And I agree, once you get 40 students that are coming from different cohorts, I think the whole keeping cohorts separate really falls apart. You're basically interacting with the entire student population at that point. I don't know if there's science that would, would back up my statement, but 40 students is, is like 10% of our campus population, right, between the two campuses? So we're already talking about a lot of students. And then furthermore, Jennifer, you had mentioned, you know, requiring everybody to attend all days. I think that that's probably not the right way to go, because, well, we want to minimize contact as much as possible. We know that they're going to be coming in contact, you know, at least sometimes a week, but if somebody only needs two days of beyond the bell, they should only be there for two days of beyond the bell. I'm one of those families that I'm fortunate that I can be flexible in this issue. I do rely on beyond the bell during normal school years, and fortunately, I have a place of employment that's being accommodating, but I know that a lot of people don't necessarily have that flexibility, but they may only need two or three days. We shouldn't compel them to attend all five days just to try to minimize. I don't see how that would minimize contact, if that makes any sense.
Okay, so thank you, Patrick. I'm going to say, Dave, I think you got some good input from board members. I think we've got some consensus that we want to see staff and the committee take another shot at the beyond the bell issue. I'm going to say this, let's take a few, let's take some time now, we're about 40 minutes into this discussion, let's take some time now to open it to the audience, non-board members, and hope, I'm going to ask you to try to keep your comments to the two things, the face coverings and beyond the bell as much as you can right now, and then we'll go back to some more discussion on some of these other items. The best thing is if you show your face, raise your hand, that's, I'll be able to see it, otherwise we'll look for folks in the chat room or the chat box. And if you want to identify your role as a teacher, a parent, or both, or some And if you want to identify your role as a teacher, a parent, or both, or something else, that's welcome, but not required.
So we have Erin Hanauer's hand raised.
And I'll just, this is not directed to you, Erin, specifically, but I'll just say for everybody, if you're kind of, you know, do your best to just say, hey, I agree with these kinds of comments, or me too, or if you have a different view than what's been discussed tonight. Or at least, put it that way, please. Very welcome. Thanks, Erin.
Okay, so I have a question. I think maybe part of it is my not understanding, I'm going a little tangential here with this comment, but not understanding why the goal is for a minimum day of instruction. And again, that may be with my not understanding how you're utilizing teachers to do in-classroom versus out-of-classroom work and designated that to different people. But I think that that, the survey didn't ask if people needed childcare if there was a minimum day of school. I don't feel like the survey really defined a difference in needs. It was just whether or not you needed childcare or not. And so I don't think you probably captured all the parents who are going to need childcare if there is a four-hour school day. So I would anticipate that there's going to be a larger number than that just twenty percent if you're talking about a three-to-four-hour school day, depending on the age level of the student. And then if you're talking about extending that aftercare services and providing to a larger number of people, I don't, I guess I am failing to understand why we wouldn't use that time as an educational time as opposed to childcare time.
Yeah, those are some good points. Thank you. And then let's, let's keep hearing from member, members of the audience or the teachers' parents that want to comment on those, especially on those two things. Anybody else?
Has her hand raised?
Hi, thank you, guys. I know you're working really hard. I appreciate all of the extra time everybody has been putting in. And I know, Steve, you mentioned keeping this to the idea of Beyond the Bell. But I had a question, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to talk about the quote "pure cohort" that Mr. Rose you were talking about. Is it okay to comment on that right now?
Do what you can. I mean, we, we want to hear, and I think my, my point was, Dave's got at least six things he wants to make sure the board gives input on. We're about fifty minutes in, so if we do board comment, then public comment, board comment, public comment. That's what I'm hoping, but, you know, bring, bring it on and
Okay. Just because it's on my, my thought as that was mentioned. Number one, I know we're dealing with multiple levels of students, and the idea of keeping students as limited as possible to exposure as well as teachers, I completely understand that. As a teacher, I'm also thinking of the different levels of students. Number one, you have students that may need support in one area of academics, but not necessarily all academics. And so making sure that they have the support that they need for that one or two particular areas, but that they're also able to be in class and exposed to those subjects where they may not need the extra support. Then we have, of course, the level of students that are on level. That might be the easiest way to keep that cohort together. And then, of course, we have students that in some areas are, are operating at the accelerated level. And just being one of the accelerated teachers, I know that not all of the students in each of those accelerated classes are in all of the accelerated classes. So I guess just to put on the, the plate of thoughts, how would we keep that pure cohort when there are students on multiple spectrums that it may not be appropriate to keep them together throughout the entire period of the school day? That's just my input.
It's a good question. Let's see, other questions, comments on, on the going
Was that, was that in relation to Hillcrest? That comment? Thank you.
The question could apply to Gravonstein, too, I imagine.
But it could. For me, I'm thinking of the Hillcrest community, seventh and eighth grade, tends to be the wheelhouse that I'm in right now. But I, I would imagine that definitely supports happening at both campuses.
Beth Dawson? I see, Ms. Dawson.
My question has to do with the different developmental abilities of kids based on ages and mask-wearing or face covering-wearing. And my understanding is there's a proposal essentially that all students will be wearing masks during instruction, in-class instruction. So I'm wondering if there are going to be considerations for, you know, younger children's capacity for the duration of mask-wearing, education there provided around that, and a little bit of more flexibility versus the older kids, or not even just with age, but, you know, even within the same classroom, you have children with a variety of sensory differences and, you know, levels. So I'm just wondering, I'm hoping, I guess, that that be factored into the planning. I like what you said, Dave, about the specifics of thirty minutes max and a mask and then a break. I think that sounds great. But I'm just hoping that developmental needs will be factored into that equation, and that's all.
Linda Hilton?
Thank you. I'm just going back to the shortened day and then having to do distance learning on top of that. I just wanted to mention that initially when we talked about that, it was for, you would do distance learning for only those students that were on your roll sheet. So if you had sixteen kids for Gravonstein, you would have maybe four or five that you would be responsible for distance learning, so those kids came in. And that, I think, is a very workable situation on a shortened day, you know, with a shortened day. But at Hillcrest, it's a little bit different because if we have sixteen kids, so we're going to have something like forty kids in distance learning that we're each going to have to deal with on a daily basis. It's going to be a lot, lot more. So I would really hope that when the plan is finalized, that it is, that is taken into consideration how much extra time. You're talking about putting the teachers into having to do basically two separate jobs, because distance learning, it just takes more time than in-classroom learning, is my experience. So that would be my consideration. And the other thing is, I know the board members and Davis have heard from me today on the waiting for a plan to be solidified. I, I don't, I don't like that we're waiting so long, and I understand that things change on a daily basis. But if West County and Oak Grove, Santa Rosa City Schools, Petaluma City Schools, they all come down with a plan, then we should be able to have a plan, too. I agree with Erin Hanauer that parents need to know, teachers need to know. I need to be able to figure out what I'm doing, and the longer I wait, the harder it's going to be. So that's all I had to say. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we have T. Koenig. I know, I just murdered that last name.
No, you, you did a great job. It's Tracy Koenig. I'm on my six hour of board meetings for my children's school. I have two things to say regarding masks. I have not let my thirteen-year-old out very much into the public, just so he is not frightened by how crazy it all looks. So I did an experiment and took him to Costco and had him wear his mask for the forty-minute shopping. And after we left the store, he said, there is no way I can spend the whole day at school with this mask. And I have been adamant that I will probably not send my child to school if he has to wear a mask. And then I thought, I should take his opinion. So I did that experiment, and I realized it wasn't just me, it is him as well. And so I'm curious, if they're in the classroom for ten, fifteen minutes, and they take this break without masks, are they standing far apart from people outside without the mask? Like, that's going to be very difficult to monitor. So what happens if you send a child to school? They have to wear the mask, and they decide, I cannot do this. I need to go to full-on distance learning. Is that option available? Also, the cohort thing. I am probably an irresponsible parent to many of you, as my child has a friend over today, and my sixteen-year-old has been out with his friends for months. I cannot stop their mental health. So the intermingling with the cohorts at school is a great idea, but in reality, they are probably intermingling with people outside of school, with their family or in the neighborhood. I get that it's a great idea, but I don't know if it's feasible. And then my last question is, I'm sure we'll get to it, I'm an out-of-district parent, so I would like to know what my options are for independent study, if I go back and forth between distance learning and in-class learning. Thank you.
But thank you. And I'm just gonna take a step back to Ms. Hilton's comments. You said, hey, you know, you, some board members have already heard from you today. So I think a number of teachers and others have emailed board members today or tomorrow. If you're on this call and you send an email, I would, and your point has not been brought up. I'd encourage you to still, you know, bring it up. Don't assume everybody got every email. Sorry to say that, but. Yeah, and we're looking for especially new comments, new ideas, or quick me-tos. Other, who's next? Comments from?
We, Erin Hanauer's hand is raised again.
Okay, anybody else who hasn't had a chance to speak yet?
I'd like to ask if, I had a, I had a teacher, or yeah, a teacher send me an email about professional development and the tools that are available to staff for remote learning. I'd love to hear more about that from Dave as part of this conversation.
Okay. So let's, if we, do you feel, I'm, I'm gonna say, let's hold that one for a bit. Let's see if there's anybody else talking about masks or Beyond the Bell. And then let's go down to the rest of Dave's list, give some board discussion, go for public, rest of the audience discussion, and then we'll, we'll see what other kind of like parking lot issues we want to catch later on. So Ms. Stephanie Tomsky, please.
Hi, I emailed to the board earlier, I think it was last night, and I just wanted to echo a couple things that I already heard. Masks, I really do think that it, the sooner the district can get information out to parents to practice wearing masks with the students will be better. The kids entering my class will be four years old, and they'll really need that practice. And then also, I would like to echo Linda Hilton about, we need a plan, and we need to, we need, we need something concrete to be able to work from. It's been, it's been very difficult for, for me as a parent and a teacher, especially a parent of a student with an IEP. And I think having a plan would be able to help me as a teacher move forward, but also help me as a parent move forward.
Thanks. Other comments on the, this point? Okay.
I think Erin Hanauer's last.
Sorry, Erin, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to make a comment about the mask thing. I mean, I already stated that I think people should be hearing about that now for the practicing, and I can't stress like how important that is. I mean, I am in a line of work where I wear an N95 mask for eight hours. And it takes a little while to get used to, but you get used to it. I have a three-year-old who is used to wearing a mask because we force her to wear a mask every time we leave the house. I have an almost twelve-year-old who, who is actually doing ballet, who is required to wear a mask while she's doing ballet, and the first day it was horrible, and the rest of the time it was wonderful. So I think that, like, telling parents they need to practice and having them start now and not in two weeks or three weeks is like a super vital thing. And then I also just want to support the teachers in saying that they need a plan, that the plan doesn't have to be concrete. It needs to be, these are options A, B, and C, and this is what we will do in these three situations. It doesn't mean that you know that A or B or C is happening, but we need to know what the options are.
Thanks. Other comments right now on those first couple of questions our superintendent brought us? And we see, I see Jill, and you're, you're gonna probably get unmuted in a second here, one way or another. There you go, you're unmuted.
I just wanted to, I guess, echo and confirm just what Erin was saying about the mask. And anyone who's talking about wearing a mask, most of you don't know it, but I worked as a respiratory therapist over fifteen years in facilities throughout this country, taking care of pediatric to adult, you know. And I, I'm just gonna say it, I'm appalled when I hear people saying that they don't want to wear a mask or that we shouldn't wear a mask. As a respiratory therapist, I never saw any other issue other than public health and being kind to others and preventing disease. And whether some people think it is, you know, some, to whatever degree people view this at, it is a problem, and we should all be willing to wear a mask for others. I myself am a severe asthmatic. My son is as well. And at this point, just keep waiting to hear that we will have a full-distance learning option to start at Hillcrest. And I feel so strongly about it that if there isn't one, then we will be finding a different school, simply because I don't want to send my son to school with people saying that they don't think that people should wear masks. I mean, I think it's common courtesy for everybody, so that's just my thought on that. Hoping we do hear some kind of plan, even if it's not going to be ironed out totally, but just to hear, you know, we will have distance learning, or we will have this or that, would be, I think the teachers need it.
Sign out to your, Erin Hanauer, can you mute, please?
I just wanted to say, I, too, have relied upon the after, the after-school care, but obviously that's not an issue for me at this point, but, you know, I know that some people will need it. So I'm not sure what the solution is, but the whole cohort, I, I completely understand why you're doing that. In the hospitals, they do that. Right now, they're doing that. They're trying to keep healthcare workers with the same patients all the time, just so that you do not have multiple exposures. Because it's a game of numbers. Every person you're exposed to increases your chances, so thank you.
Allison Rich, I think was next. Allison, can you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I had a couple of comments. One, hi, everyone. Nice to see you. One is that need for a plan before July 31st. I am in an interesting situation in that my daughter will be attending Hillcrest this year, and I still have a son at Oak Grove. So being a parent with kids has been nice from the parent perspective to know what my son's school is doing come the fall. Three different ways, you know, if this, then distance learning, if this, a hybrid, if this. So we were able to do a parent's survey, and from that, I know that they're going to do the A, B select in a, that my son will go to school on Monday and Tuesday, and then he'll be home Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So that's really given me peace of mind in term of, in terms of organizing my childcare at this point in the summertime. Who can I rely on to be home Wednesday, Thursday, Friday with my son? Now, with my daughter being a student at Hillcrest and me being a teacher at Hillcrest and not knowing what my schedule looks like, I don't know what to expect. She wins days when my son is not at home. So from a parent perspective, need a plan. That's the biggest thing. I just need to be able to plan, and all of this unknown and waiting until July 31st, it just makes me feel something. And I was one of the teachers that sent an email today to teachers and administration. And one of my pieces know, distance learning is not ideal. But I also know that getting COVID is not ideal. So if we have to pick the ideal of the two, I would much rather be home where I know I'm safe in teaching and learning, putting myself at risk, my students at risk, my family at, at risk. It really, it really makes me concerned, so. Since all of our chances of getting COVID, then I feel like that isn't ideal. So that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you.
There's Stuart Crandall.
Is it actually Kate, I'm sorry, that's my husband's name, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, we're not gonna, we gotta listen to you now.
Thanks, Greg. I'm trying to stay on topic here, so I'm staying on the mask topic. Because I know obviously there's so many things for us to, to discuss, but I, I really want to be in support of all of my fellow teachers in this. And I think that the mask wearing is non-negotiable for most of us. I think that, you know, right now what's being stated by our county health advisor is that if you are above two years old, you're, you're wearing a mask. And I think that a lot of teachers are very fearful of being in the classroom with unmasked children. And so I, I can understand that there's a lot of anxiety about how your child is going to feel in the classroom with, you know, a bunch of other masked children. But at this point, you know, in the United States, in Sonoma County with increasing numbers, teachers are not going to feel safe unless all of the children are masked. And I, I, I'm sure that's not a, you know, I can only speak for most of the teachers that I've spoken to. I'm sure there's some teachers that feel a little bit like they would be a little bit more flexible in turn, terms of the masking. But most of the teachers that I have spoken to really feel like all of the kids need to be masked, starting even in TK and kindergarten. And you know, kids are really flexible, you know, like my own children, they complain about the mask and then, you know, they get used to it. If we're taking breaks every 30 minutes, I think that kids are gonna do just fine. It's gonna be hard for all of us, but this is sort of gonna be the new normal if we're gonna be doing in-person instruction. So I just really wanted to make sure that I expressed the concerns that I've been hearing from teachers and their fear of being back in the classroom and masks are something that teachers really want to see happening. And right now that's what the order is, so that's kind of what we have to go along with, obviously. So for now, I'll keep with the masks, I have other things, but we can, I'll come back later if needed.
Okay, thank you. Any, any new or different comments contrary to what we've been hearing, maybe?
We have Megan Gorman.
Welcome.
All right, I was just gonna reiterate kind of what Kate had said about wearing the masks and how really important that is. I mean, I have a three-year-old, he will wear a mask just fine, but it was a fight to get him in the mask. It had to be a special dinosaur mask that I made him. And then finally he would wear it. But I mean, a lot of it comes from our perspective and really talking it up to them, saying, this is such a cool thing that we're doing. And I hate the mask, so I'm lying the whole time. Like this is such a special thing we're doing, we're protecting others around us, we're helping everyone. And I mean, I say the same thing to my seven-year-old, like you're, this is helping those around us, even when like my whole face is sweating and I want to take my mask off. It's about our perspective and kind of how we give that out to the students as well. I mean, I hear a lot of comments about, well, it's gonna be so scary for them, this is all new, but it's, it's new, but so is every year for them. And if we act like it's not, I mean, it's a big deal that COVID is around and these are the precautions we're, we're taking, then unless we're like, wow, this is really scary, they're gonna feed into our fears as much as anything else. So it's kind of our confidence in that we're doing the best thing that we can do and these are the safety precautions kind of adds a lot to student perspective and student behavior as well. That's my take on it.
I, I'd like to say one quick thing before Jared hears that. I'm a little bit interested of the, how we got off onto the mask in the way we have because the actual request from Dave is for us to approve full mask everybody. So I, I think the teacher's concern about the mask, I think that is, we can put that to rest, that's the actual request. I mean, I, I hear the, the, everyone saying they want a plan. And my question to, to someone to administration, but also to teachers is, have the teachers and administration agreed on a plan? If they haven't agreed on a plan, then calling for a plan could be, you know, a little bit not how it can work. I think the board is looking for administration and teachers to come to us with a plan they worked out. So I thought it was still in committee, still developing the plan. So if I'm wrong on that, then please let me know.
So just taking a step back in terms of the documentation and the questions I have out there, the committee is ready to get to work on the specifics of the instructional format and how we do that. In order for the committee to move forward, there are six action items that I would like the board to take action on tonight. There's lots of discussion about wanting a plan. And if we had put out a plan two weeks ago, that plan would now be obsolete based upon our new data and we would be starting over again. The data that we have is changing. And so when we talk about the districts having a plan, they don't, they don't have an approved plan, they have a sketch. They have the same information that we're talking about tonight, but nobody has committed to exactly what they're going to do. West County had their meeting last night and talked about their discussion about having a full distance learning opening. There was a great deal of public pushback from that. And so they are back to the drawing board and now looking at something new. We're in the timeline right now where we need some decisions made so that the committee can put together an instructional plan. And one of them is the board saying that all students and staff will be wearing masks during instruction and during time with distancing is not possible. I have a whole list of questions that I was jotting down as we go through here and I want to address them because we, we can't go back to committee. Everything that's on this page and everything that has been discussed, this committee has been working for almost three months. And as a district, there's, there's none of these questions and none of these things that we haven't considered. What we're coming to you is with our best recommendations. And so when we talk about the beyond the bell, that is our best recommendation. That is our recommendation about health. If we look at trying to do something more creative or something different, there is a limited amount of space on our campus. And during beyond the bell, we'll also have to maintain six-foot distancing, which means that we can have 15 students per class, but they will be isolated and they will be, they will be separated. And we will be limited in terms of the number of families that we can serve in the beyond the bell. And we are going over the cohort issue. So as we talk about those cohorts and we've listened to the health officer and we listened, we understand that having beyond the bell for staff members only is an additional risk. And we get that and we know that. We also know that we will not have our teachers available if we don't have some service for them. That's why the committee has come back with this recommendation. And you can ask us to go back in committee and spend time on that issue. But right now, there's been months and hours spent on that issue. And the best answer that we can recommend to you is for the opening of the school year is that we suspend beyond the bell for the general population and that we open it when we get into stage four or there's some other health directive. Because we have limited space and we have limited staff. If the board directs us tonight to go through and hire more staff and we will need two staff members per classroom and we will have multiple classrooms, we are, we are gonna run out of space and it is going to be tremendously expensive to do that. And it's going to be greater exposure. And it also means that we're gonna have teachers that are not going to be comfortable with doing that. Because remember on this committee, there are multiple teachers that have given feedback on this plan and their health is a, is a concern and rightly so. And if we have more of those cohorts mixing other than just the students of staff right now, then we're gonna have to start over with how we plan this. Because we're gonna have many, many more teachers that aren't gonna be comfortable being on campus at all. And so that's the recommendation. There's a ton of other questions that came up.
Can we go to the, your next two, you said you had six key questions, we've covered two. Can we go down your list to the next one or two? And then in about 10 minutes, we'll take a little bio break.
Right, but I would also like the opportunity to address all of the questions that came up.
It's gonna be, I don't know, I, I think, I think you've addressed a lot and we can't address them all. And I think you want to hear board, this board input. I feel like we've been, we're an hour in, hour and 10 minutes into this discussion. We're at two of your six items, you've gotten some input on, we're trying, you want to come out with a vote. I feel like it might be just good to make sure you bring up the, the key things, those other four key things that you want the board to input on. But take, make, make, take your choice, yeah.
So the master number one, the suspension of the beyond the bell for the general public is number two.
Yep, we talked about.
Approval of date, we've talked about it, Steve, but we don't have a decision. And so sending it back to committee is going back to the point of what many of the people have talked about tonight where they want a plan. And what we're telling you as a committee is that if we keep taking these questions back to the committee and we come back and say, okay, beyond the bell, we're gonna open it for all staff, then we're gonna have a significant number of staff to say, I don't feel that that's a safe working environment, I can't work there. And then we're gonna have to spend more time coming up with a plan.
So Dave, here's my, here's what I'm thinking. I'm kind of taking a straw poll, I'm listening to what board members are saying, I'm kind of seeing where consensus is. I think we go through the six items, at the end of that, we'll have a motion and, or, and we may have an emotion, a motion to support the whole plan or we might have an emotion to support part of it and then a second motion that way. So I don't, I don't think we need to take six votes on the six items and, but if you, if other board members think they want to take a one at a time and vote on each one, you know, I'm open to that too. I think, I think it might be more efficient to just kind of hear the list, have the discussion and then, and see where, how many things we can support. And how many we have, we're not ready to.
I, I thought he was actually giving us this, he said number one and then he said number two. So I, I'd like to start with number one and just list the six things that you're about to say there, Dave, please.
So you want to make a motion?
One was mask, two is the suspension of beyond the bell, three was the daycare for children of staff, four was approval to have a shortened day schedule until we reach stage four or we have some other health department guidance. Five is the approval of the components of the site-specific protection plan. And six is the approval of the timeline for the public release of the instructional model and the parent response timeline. So would you like me to address the other questions and concerns that came up?
You talk about number six, you said, I'm just trying to find that portion of it on the document that you've provided, is that on here? Is it the instructional model, the last one, is that the one you're talking about?
Right, let me, let me get to that. Right here. Staff continues to develop models for instruction that will provide the maximum amount of direct teacher instruction possible. We have a, we will have a proposed model ready for release by July 31st. And then we will want to have parents make a commitment by August 5th. And that would give us two weeks to do classroom grouping as well as set a schedule.
Would you mind just bolding the section that you want us to approve? Because I think I missed number three and I'm just not sure what that is.
Yeah, and, and maybe just put a number on them too, just be like three point, yeah. For the purposes of this discussion tonight. Sorry for everybody doing the Zoom call on this, but appreciate all the work that went into this. So Dave, you're updating things and getting ready to share, is that what's going?
Yeah, I, this, you're seeing the screen, correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it actually as the Google Docs, I can read.
But I'm, I'm sharing it on my screen as well.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we've got one. I'm not seeing number five.
See it now.
I see four is committee recommends that GSC adopt a shortened day. And then I'm just going down.
It's the site protection plan. It's after facial coverings, it's after number one.
Got it, thanks. All right, so we've talked about one, two, and three committee further recommends. Seven, 10, I think, unless anybody on the board opposes, we probably take our little bio break here, come back at 7:15. And then we would talk about, I guess, four, five, and six and see where it goes. All right. So probably should I do that while we're taking a break? So that's my suggestion, any board members want to suggest something different, do it real quick. Otherwise we'll see you back at 7:15. I think it's six minutes, yeah. Thanks. We'll give it one more minute. I'm think Jennifer will probably be back. Looks like Patrick's not back. So we'll give it one more minute and go. No, I'm back, guys.
Yes, Patrick, remember to.
All right, Dave, you want to get us going?
I would. So in looking at those questions, there were multiple questions about the masks. So that is a consideration. So there's been lots of discussion there. It's the committee's recommendation that it is a face covering and we follow that protocol. So we would like that motion. There was a question about why the survey didn't include information about a minimum day. At that point, when we put the survey out, the state had not yet given us guidance in terms of what instructional model should look like. So as we're looking at gathering information and making these decisions and going through this, this is the gamut that we're going through in terms of the timing with what information is there and what feedback we can get. So that question was not in the survey because at that time we had not received that guidance or clearance from the state. We had teachers talking about the cohort grouping and how we're going to set students up and student assignment and model. We will address that once we know from our parents, given that we are going to do masks, our decision about beyond the bell, our hygiene protocol and all the information that we put out, we need to give our parents the opportunity to process that information and make the best decision for them. The question was out there, will we have a distance learning model, full distance learning? Yes, we will. We will have a full distance learning option. Will we have a hybrid model and will we have an in-school model? Yes. What exactly will that look like? We can't know the answer to that until we get a plan to put out there for the parents to consider, and then for us to give them their final decision. That question about bouncing back and forth between programs. If I decide my child can't handle wearing a mask, or if I need to do this, that's going to be very, very difficult for us to monitor. If we have movement into distance learning, that becomes an easier thing to manage. But if we have families that say, gee, the distance learning model is really difficult. We're having a hard time keeping up. You know, you said this was going to be more rigorous. We didn't know how much more rigorous. We want to switch to the hybrid model or the classroom model. That's going to be very difficult for us to monitor because we have a limited amount of space in each of our classrooms. And so when we have parents that make that designation, it, we are going to, we can't set a policy now because we don't know what the numbers are. Movement into distance learning only will be much easier than movement into the other programs. Once we develop what those are. So that's the response around that. There was a question about the professional development and training from Jennifer. Megan Gorman and the district learning, the distance learning committee and professional development committee, along with Carrie, have put out a survey to staff that have asked the specific questions they need around distance learning, social emotional learning, specific to different subject areas, technology. So we have that information. We know what staff need, and we're preparing those professional development opportunities as we go forward. I think I was able to condense all of the questions and the, and the things that, that came here. We're in a tough situation. Again, we can't make a decision that's going to make everybody happy. So as we look at this, and we want to have as much instruction as possible while we're balancing that safety, this daycare piece is an important part. It is a critical component for decisions for our families. And we, we need to make a decision. We need to make an announcement so they can make plans. The other part of this is our primary mission is to provide an educational setting for our students. Many, many school districts don't have a daycare option. We are fortunate enough that we do have that. And our recommendation is a committee with our health concerns and being able to provide the safest work environment for our staff and to maintain the healthy for our students is that we suspend beyond the belt to start. And that's, that's our recommendation as a committee. So if there's other direct questions from the board about some of these motions that we're asking you to consider, that would be great.
Um, as a member of that reopening committee, I think it would be helpful for folks to understand that the teachers have definitely expressed the desire to have the beyond the bell closed and have only their, their kids in those programs for safety reasons, which I totally understand. And, um, when you look at the composition of that committee, it is 15 folks, three of them are parents or board member who happen to be parents. And then the rest are teachers and administration. So I think that that's not very representative of our community and the community needs. I, I understand the need of the teachers, and I don't want to minimize that anyway. And I want to make sure that our priorities and safety, but again, I just want to go back to, I, it feels like there might be some other considerations we can make to make this work. And that's my recommendation is that go back to the committee and have this conversation and consider the impacts of the parents and the community that this will have.
One thing real quick. It sounds to me like there's enough information for parents to start getting an idea of what the school year is going to look like, what Dave just said. For those parents who feel they're going to be in need of a full distance learning option, that will exist. There will also exist a hybrid option, and there will be some kids who will be able to go full time. So I would ask that if you, if people feel that they still don't have enough there to at least know that there is three options that we're working with, please email Dave directly and CC the board. But I think what, what Dave is waiting on is that he has the final information for the mask, final information for the distance. Because right now, um, you know, I've read one document that says four to six feet, but the actuality that we're going by is six feet. So unless there comes another mandate down, um, or the state changes how it's going to allocate funds. The state in the meeting that I was in today was very clear. They're not sure that if a school attempts to go distance learning the entire year, that they will get full funding. So I would ask that if people still feel they don't have information to know that one of those three options, what we'll have next year, please email Dave directly and maybe CC the board. But I think, at least for me as a parent, I know that my child will either be in school or in a hybrid program. And that is what I'm having a plan for.
Before we make any further decision or make a decision, would it be possible to continue to go through the remaining items? I think we've only covered two. Is that the, is that your plan? It's, I'm still trying to figure out what the, how we're approaching.
We covered two and one, two, and three. Uh, we haven't talked about four, five, and six. Two and three, the way he's, Dave's broken them down are really the same on the doc. I, I feel like we've covered two and three, but yeah.
We've talked about four, that we want to have a shortened day.
Okay.
Pursuant to these daily requirement minutes.
Okay, the board hasn't given comments on that one yet, and we haven't heard public comments on four yet. So if you want to introduce anything more on four, Dave, you, right now, that'd be great. Or, and otherwise I'm going to turn it to discussion.
Okay. So as, as the legislation came out and the trailer bills that followed, there was the decision about the attendance and the funding base will be the attendance from last year. However, there is requirement, a daily minute requirement for instruction that we will have to do daily documentation and a weekly documentation that will be audit ready and that can stand up to an audit to ensure that these number of minutes are in place for students. Additionally, we will be required to track attendance so that if we have any students that are not engaging or that are not meeting this, we would use our typical truancy procedures as well. So again, the safety area around this, at least to open, is that we would like to have the permission to have a shortened day schedule until we reach stage four, or there's some additional health directive that allows us to expand the day.
That's the question I have, Dave. And I know that you, I, I think you talked about this at the beginning of the meeting that, and this is something I also heard on that SCOE call yesterday, that it seems like because schools and teachers and school staff are all considered now essential workers, that they, they're kind of untethering the idea of stage three, stage four from, um, schools. And so I'm wondering how that would, how that would all work if we, you know, we're setting our guidelines on if we reach stage four, then we go to full day. If that's no longer tied together, um, what are you seeing there? And what do you expect? How do you expect that to change?
So that's why I've worded this suggested motion, and I've added the or additional health directives. And so right now, the directive is that we have the minimum day. That is the idea behind the health officer that minimizes the exposure. It minimizes the amount of time that our youth and staff are on campus with masks, and it allows us to address the core areas. So you're correct, we're no longer tied to those stage. We are the essential services. But if we do get that move to stage four, that changes the social distancing requirements. It changes what we can do, and that additional health guidance from the health officer could say, okay, this minimum exposure or minimum time at school, it's been successful. It's been effective. We're a month in. This is the data that we're getting from schools, and this is what we're hearing from Dr. Mace. We're finding that the hygiene principles, the practices, the sanitization, what we're doing is working. And so it, it is okay right now to expand to a full day. And the idea is, is that we would be at least a month in this program to give the, the health officer a chance to then reevaluate based upon what the cases were at that point and the happenings in schools across the county.
So Greg, Patrick, any comments, questions on this number four? Or sorry, Jennifer, if you're still on this, please do.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, the health directive that you're referring to is from Sonoma County Health Department?
Right. Dr. Mace. And so it's not a directive in terms of it being part of a law or a part of a health order. It's guidance. And so our guidance is that we would want to keep the school day as short as possible to minimize exposures and to minimize the amount of time that our children are wearing masks during a school day.
And, and to clarify, are let's see, I'm not sure if I'm, my audio's on right now.
You are.
To clarify, um, in the draft I got a couple of days ago, it suggested like probably no enrichments during these shortened days. Is that where we are with the current plan?
So as we've talked about earlier, we talked about the enrichment specialist and using them for the built-in breaks that we want to use throughout the day to put them at, at work in terms of designing some of those blacktop activities and outdoor activities. And to also have those enrichments built in as something that we can do after school through a distance learning format. But yes, as we open the school year, we want to focus on the four core subject areas. We want to assess potential learning loss. We want to make sure that we're catching up, that we're catching anybody up that, that was not able to engage or benefit from what happened in the spring and that we hit the ground running and have those grade level common core standards as the focus of the time that students are on campus.
It's, um, so sorry. So if someone asks me, when would enrichment start, what would I say?
At this point, we would be evaluating what's happening after the first month of school. And if we get clearance to expand that day, if guidance from our county health officer says, okay, now it's time you're, everybody's going back to distance learning because there's been too many infections. That could be an outcome. It could be, this is working, but we're getting some infections. Continue with the model as we are. Or the hygiene protocols, the things that you're doing, it's working really well. We've had almost no school-based infections that we're tracing back to schools or students. So if you have things that you want to expand your schedule, you can.
Okay. Did you look at, did the, did you guys look at, um, if I, the enrichment consultants or contractors doing some distance learning during that first month for enrichments, people?
Right. That's what we said, Steve. Yes.
So I have one question here that came up is a parent asked, um, is this plan five days a week? The minimum days that five days a week?
Correct. And so let me clarify that, Gregory. I, I don't want to say that every student is going to be attending a minimum day, five days a week. We, we don't have enough information to decide that yet. We still need to have the board look at these items, the six items that I'm suggesting that we can take back to the committee and then work directly with the teachers in terms of the model that we can put in place and the grouping that we can have. So we know right now that we have more space at Hillcrest than we do at Gravenstein in the classrooms. We know that we have a greater likelihood of having the ability to have a Hillcrest student on campus for five days a week for a shortened day. And then, you know, extend the day with possibly some enrichments or other supports. When we look at our campus and our population at Gravenstein, we're going to have a harder time having all students on campus every day. That want to have that. And so we also know we have a significant population, about a third. That have the resources and that would be comfortable with a distance learning model that has also some in school, so the hybrid. So we are going to be mixing that. We want to make in-person instruction available five days a week. But not every student would be on campus five days a week, typically for the TK to five level.
Okay, so. Do you want to cover number, well, any other board members who want to comment or question on this number four?
Yeah, once again, it is, it will be a challenge and I know we've, time to time again. People often rely on schools since childcare is not necessarily the right thing, but. And but I also have to defer to you, Dave, and also the staff that this is the best option that you guys are coming with. I'm going to have to trust in that, you know, shortened days is going to make that lack of a beyond the belt program much more difficult. I just have to say that, I know it's already recognized, but I just got to repeat it here.
Yeah, and Patrick, you're, you're exactly right. And in a perfect world, we would open five days a week with full school days with all of our enrichments and beyond the belt. And we'd love to do that. Everybody on the committee would absolutely love to do that. We know that that's not a reality during this pandemic. We know that we're going to have to make some sacrifices and some difficult choices. And we're not going to have the perfect model that's going to meet the needs of all of our families. But we also know that if we, if we stretch beyond the recommendations that are out there. If we increase our exposure, the chances and likelihood of. More than one contamination or more than one positive test or several positive tests could push us all back into distance learning. We know that adults are more susceptible and adults have a more significant response. And so if we have tech staff members or multiple staff members, we also know that has a massive impact on the entire program. So we're trying to balance that. And when, what I opened with is it's the balance between that priority of health and safety. And having the world-class level of instructional program that we want to put on. We're not going to be able to do all of them, we're not going to be able to do that. But the, the key of, of what we're doing is. The more that we can have our children exposed to our incredible teachers, the better program that we're possibly going to have. And that, that is really, you know, the, the key to what we have and it's, it's our teachers and what they do.
Well, I, I, I respect that. I do have a question about. You know, we have this model coming into the school year, is there consideration for when we could go back to? Or is that another time?
No, that's, that's exactly what we talked about before with Jennifer. And so what we talked about before, prior to this week, we were tied to the stages in terms of the reopening. Currently, Sonoma County is in stage two. If school were to open tomorrow in stage two, we would be full distance learning. And we were waiting for that stage three movement. We have now received word that education is considered an essential service. So we're not as tied directly to those stages. However, we have guidelines from the CDC, from the state health department, from the county health department. We have all of these recommendations in terms of what we do and how we monitor. And we have the county health officer that is advising us and helping us look at these standards. Look at the data, look at the infection rate in our county, look at the mortality relate, look at the spread rate. Set up the contract tracing, all of those things are in place. And with those factors after one month, all of the models for all of the districts will be looked at. And if things are going well, we're going to have that opportunity to expand, which is exactly what we want to do. If they're just so-so, we're going to have to stick with the model we opened with for at least another month. And if things are going poorly, there's a chance that we could go into all distance learning. And all of the work at the committee has been being able to flex back and forth regardless of what the situation is.
Okay, so let's open it to comments from the audience, teachers, parents. If you've got something that's been said, you know, let, just say me too quickly. And if it's something especially we haven't brought up or you have a different view, especially want to welcome that. I saw a hand from Aaron.
Beth Dawson, so she's hearing points that need clarity. One, there will not be a five-day per week program offered to all kids. Does this mean a hybrid model of the hospital, two or three days attendance? And two, enrichments will be offered in distance learning at first and then only in person to go back at full capacity? I think those are some questions there.
So going back to the, the explanation that I was giving. At Hillcrest, we think that we're going to have space where we're going to have a five-day per week program for kids. We can't confirm that yet because we still need to talk with the teachers based upon the decisions that the board makes tonight. As we're talking about that possibility of, of the hybrid model, what we'd be looking at is a 10-day period. And we would want students that are in that hybrid model. And we're anticipating that being somewhere around 30% of our campus at Gravenstein. Being five days of instruction and five days of distance learning. So they'd be two days of instruction, one day, three day the next day. That's a possible model. We don't know that for sure yet. We don't want parents to use that to plan because we don't have that definite answer. That definite answer will be driven by the decisions that the board makes tonight.
Okay, Aaron Hilmer, let's hear you. Yeah, I think you're still muted.
Sorry about that, you'd think I'd be on that by now with all these new meetings. Um, I just have a question about bringing the enrichment teachers in for these like breaks, these mask breaks or whatever. To me, that seems also like, we don't have exclusive contracts with our enrichment instructors, I assume. And so what is, it seems a little nerf to me, are we, are you talking about bringing enrichment contractors in? Like who work with other districts and work with other spaces to come in and teach these like enrichment. Classes that then we as GPA will be fundraising for that, that to me seems risky and again shoots this cohort. Yeah, a little bit out of the water. And I also think, um. I mean, this like hybrid model of five short days. I'm just wondering, from what I've heard of other districts, it's been a lot of like two full days on. Like per, in a group of A and a group of B. Does that not limit exposure more than having the whole school there five days a week? But I guess that's just for Hillcrest. Those are my questions.
Okay, so yeah, let, let me address that. The reason hybrid models are being considered at all is because of the class size restrictions. If we could have all 21 students in every classroom at Gravenstein, that's exactly what we do. We have the space for 15 students per classroom. We have some students who want only distance learning. That typically means that we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 18 to 20 students per class. That would like some form of in-person instruction. When we look at the hybrid models that are out there and when they're discussed. There has to be room and space and a way for teachers to not only address the students that are at home. But to address the students that are in class. One way of doing that is for teachers to either record or broadcast their lessons. And have the students that are at home be required to attend remotely at the same time. And then that student, that teacher is giving instruction one time. And then we have that shortened day to allow teachers and the instructional aids to provide additional support for students as well as enrichments. However, and I want to emphasize this. Any discussion tonight about the details of the hybrid model is not a valuable use of our time. Because our teachers are not ready to talk about that yet. We haven't decided that because we have to make some other decisions on these other options tonight. And then we also have to know how many students are going to be on campus, how many want full-time distance learning and what that looks like. So we, we can't put that information out tonight. We want to make sure that parents understand it's an option. It's something that we're considering, it's in front of the committee. We've talked about the merits of a variety of different hybrid models and we're ready to apply them. But we can't do that planning yet until we have the decisions for the, from the board on the other six items that we're looking at.
Okay, so Dave, I'm going to encourage us to just get some other comments from the audience and then you could. Respond maybe after all of those on this number four and that we, it might be more efficient and you could get. So are there other questions?
Question about the enrichment contractors coming in to teach short break enrichments between Matt during mask breaks? Is that the plan is to bring enrichment contractors in for those breaks or to do it with staff?
No, that, we, we would like to work with the enrichment contractors to do that as well as some distant learning enrichment opportunities after school hours.
Right, so again, I will just state that that then blows your cohort.
No, it doesn't because when, anytime that they're out there, they're going to be practicing the social distancing. They're not going to be in a classroom, they're going to be, they're going to be outside. Again, the committee has put lots of time and thought and effort and energy into any of the plans that we're proposing.
Hi, any other comments from the audience or questions on number four?
I share Aaron's concern about having contractors. Working with individual classes and multiple classes, you're going to have. You know, there, to maintain the cohort truly, you're going to have a teacher and the kids. And you're going to stay in the room, you're going to have lunch in the room. You're going to, you know, there is, to maintain the cohort, that's what you need to do. And when you start introducing new instructors into the mix who have been in multiple classrooms on multiple district campuses. You are inserting another factor that is not part of the cohort. And I think even if you're doing it outside, you're still having an additional risk. So I think that's, I think it's a valid concern and. Not, I, I think it should be further considered.
So Jennifer, just to reiterate, we would not have any of the enrichment specialists in the classroom. Any of these breaks would be maintained and they would be done outside with the social distancing in place. And that break, we need to do some form of break like that for the teachers to be able to have time to take their masks off. And, and, and take a break away from students because they're not going to have prep periods. It's going to be consistent instruction. And when we're talking about the potential spread of the droplets and of the virus. The outdoor environment with social distancing is the recommendation from the health department. It is the lowest risk factor and we're not having, you know, a mix in the cohort because they're not in the classroom. So that, that would be our recommendation.
I just think it's very unlikely to have an instructor. Not get, have the possibility of having close proximity with a child, even if they're outside.
That's the, that's the type of activity that we would want them to design. We would want it designed specifically with that type of spacing in place so that they're not getting close. And if they are, then they're wearing masks. Because if there's a health issue or a safety issue where they have to attend to a child, they are going to have to approach that child. But they would be doing it with a mask. Otherwise, the, the event and activity would be spaced.
Well, the intentionality is there, I, I hear you. I think that the reality when you start dealing with kindergarteners and first graders is that that's just not realistic in a lot of ways. And you have to take that into consideration.
We, we do, and, and we will be working with our students to make sure that we can put that as safely as we possibly can.
I see Ms. Pugno has, has something.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, because I have talked with the enrichment instructors. And at this point, where, where we left off our, our conversations last month were. At that point, we were looking more at that online instruction, them pre-recording videos and sharing it. So that that could maybe be seen at home. Our committee discussion was trying, after our last committee gathering was talking about. Are there ways we can incorporate them maybe to extend the day, whether it's to make the day longer, whether it's to help with daycare, whether it's to provide some breaks? That, we know that that doesn't work for all enrichment classes. It, it can't, but there may be some flexibility. So that's what we're looking at, which ones can do it? Which instructors are, are available and open to that kind of instruction? So there isn't a plan right now, Erin and Beth, I know I'm talking with you guys on Monday more about these things. But so right now, that's, we're still at the information gathering with all the enrichment possibilities. And it really was our response was do, just trying to see what are the possibilities? You know, do we have enough classes that, you know, if we do instead of 45, can we drop it down to 30? Well, that'll allow for some breaks. Breaks with, you know, mask-free breaks outside. So there's, there's lots of things, but there isn't a, an enrichment schedule yet. And so there's no commitment by the instructors or contractors yet for that. But we are, we're gathering it really just again, bringing it back to the committee lots of all the possibilities we possibly can gather.
Okay, so anything, any other questions or comments on something that we haven't really covered on this number four? Erin, thank you.
Yeah, so, okay, I had a couple of questions. So one was just a comment going back about, talking about, you know, minimizing the day. I, I just am not clear, Megan tried to explain it to me, maybe I'm a little bit dense, but I'm not sure why. GUSD is striving to meet the minimum requirements when we are just. Into 20 students per classroom plus a TA for every classroom. And those are the minimum requirements for classrooms that have 28, 30 kids, 32 kids in the classroom. So why, why the GUSD is striving for the minimum educational requirements as opposed to expanding that to longer hours of education for the kids? And then talk, David made the two points about minimizing the contact to minimize exposure. And minimizes, minimizing the contact to minimize mask wearing. Mask wearing is going to become so normalized for these kids, four, six, eight hours is not going to be a big deal. Masks cause no harm to anybody. And, you know, if you have four versus five versus six hours of contact in the classroom, you're, the. The rate is no, if, you're not going to see a significant difference between four and six hours. You're going to see a significant distance between zero minutes and 30 minutes. But after that, it's kind of moved. And so I just, I want clarification why Gravenstein is striving for the minimum when it doesn't typically do that.
So in addressing these, this is again, guidance from all of the health officials. The, the federal health officials, the CDC, the state, as well as the county. And in terms of the, the speculation, the more time that any human being is in an enclosed space, it increases exposure. If there is the virus that's present, if it is there, then the more time that students are in the class, the more exposure there is. That is the science that we're following and that's the recommendation that we have. We would love to have a full instructional day, right now, it doesn't make sense to do that. Additionally, we will have multiple students that will be on distance learning and they'll also not be in the classroom. It has to have some time in the day for teachers and staff to be able to address those students that are also not in the classroom. And if the teachers are teaching a six-hour day and then they have two plus hours, that, that goes beyond their contract. That's a work condition and it's not something that they're going to agree to. And we're going to burn our teachers out very quickly. So that model in terms of that minimum day at least to open the school year has multiple factors behind it. There's some other questions on the, on the chat, what happens if it's a heat advisory day? Then we're going to make sure that that minimum day piece helps us as well. Because then we're minimizing the amount of time that we're exposing students and staff to the heat. But that's why we're working with our contractors right now on the ventilation and cooling questions. That's why we're having shade structures outside. So we want to make sure that we minimize the exposure to the heat and the things that are there. There was another comment about outdoor transmission that the CDC ruled it out. Has not ruled it out, that is not what I've said. I did not say that outdoor transmission has been ruled out. What I have said is that if we have social distancing. And if there's masks being worn, if they're in close proximity, that that reduces the rates of transmission significantly. Because droplets can't condense and be confined in a space if we're outdoors. So we know that is an incredibly much lower risk environment than being indoors. So the CDC has said that they cannot rule out outdoor transmission, that's, we know that and that, and that has been built in. Go ahead.
Yeah, I see that Kate has a comment and then I'd like to talk because I'd like to see if we can move this process along.
Yeah.
Because what I'm, what I think I understand, well, actually let me pick it or comment and then I'll explain what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, no, I agree, Greg, I, I think that everybody's ready to get it moved, moving along here. But, um. Erin, just on your comment, and again, this is what Dave just said, and again, I'm, I'm speaking up for our teachers here. It's super important, the, the shortened day is a must. If we're going to be managing distance learners and students in the.
If we're going to be managing distance learners and students in the classroom, we have to have time to be able to manage those distance learners. And right now, and I know that there's, we don't have complete clarity on what the the program is going to look like right now. But I mean, I'm almost hearing like we're going to be managing a hybrid model and kids that are coming every single day, sorry, and distance learners all at the same time. This is, this is a lot to put on teachers. So we have to have that time built into our day. And beyond that, and I know that there's going to be some things that are going to be taking place for the heat that happens. But that is a real concern with having kids in class for for six hours per day in the beginning of the school year. I mean, I had a kindergartner pass out on the first day of school last year at ten thirty in the morning. So if it if we're able to keep the day shorter even for that reason with kids and teachers and masks, it's super important for the health of everyone, but particularly the the mental health of our teachers, the physical health of our teachers and the students. But I I really want to speak for the teachers here. It's really important that we keep our teachers healthy and happy because otherwise, none of this works.
So Greg, let's hear your idea. I've got one, two, I want to hear yours. Let's, what do you got?
So it looks to me like the committee came up with at least five of these are straight out of the committee because they say recommended by the committee. So I think those five, and I think the only one that's a question is number six, which says the date for the plan will come out on the thirty first and parents will have to make a decision by August fifth. So what I would like to see happen is this is the request, let Dave go ahead and talk about number five. Talk about number six. And then if we we can vote on the packet of those six requests, if we need to add a rider related to having the school relook at and other options for Beyond the Bell. I think the important thing is that there's still more work for the committee to do. So I'd like to see us go ahead and at least check off all the ones that are recommended by the committee and let them continue what they're doing.
Yeah. Well, um.
I I have to say that I don't think that the childcare services question has really been considered from the parent's point of view. And that is something that we should be doing. And I think it would be helpful for us if we were, we took the time to let parents know that we're we have, we're considering a or are approving shortened day and ask them how that would impact their ability to have their child attend with us because they won't have Beyond the Bell services.
Yeah, so thanks, Jennifer and Craig. Here's my thought on this. I think we could probably spend two minutes talking about number five. We could talk five or eight minutes on number six. And then we could have a motion to either kind of prove all six or five or four of them. And then we'll, then we'll see where we're at. And we should be able, I think we can do that pretty quickly. But I don't know if we'll have three votes for the whole package. I think we don't. But number five to me is the most non-controversial. I basically saying, just to review it for people who are not reading this document, it's basically talking about occupancy limits, hand sanitizer, disinfection, disinfectant, that kind of thing. And that and giving the authority to do this Gravstein Student Parent Handbook at a later date. So does any, does anybody on the board have a concern about that? Or do you feel it's essential that we kind of put some parameters on that that later date or?
I think that they're all really important. My only question is about the last sentence, a student calendar is currently being prepared. And I'd just like some clarification as to what that means.
Every, every year, a handbook and student calendar is printed. So this year, we're printing just the student calendar.
The reason I ask that is because we've already approved a calendar for this coming year.
It's not the master calendar. It's not the schedule of instructional days. It's simply a calendar for students to use for their planning.
Planner.
I see.
So the recommendation is send out the calendar now, send out the handbook later, right?
Calendar is basically a day planner.
So the student calendar is not the district calendar. This is just the day plan, got it, thank you. That's the clarification.
Okay, any other board members on number five? Okay, so let's go to this number six. I mean, I think the big question here is is it an, if if the committee came back with by July thirty first, is that soon enough? Is giving the parents then six days to review that model and then make a give input commitment to a model by eight, five, is that enough time? Or do we want to ask the committee to either, you know, push, come out with their model before July thirty first? Or do we want to give parents a little more time on the backend? So that's, that's kind of the question before, so the way I understand it, is that the question before? Any other thoughts or Dave, is that fair the way I framed the question?
Correct, as we're looking at this, again, the decisions from the board tonight are going to drive the work for the committee as we're going forward. As you've heard from multiple teachers and multiple members of the public, they are anxious to hear what type of model we're going to put in place and what the options are. And right now, we have to work with the teachers in terms of what those working conditions are and what will work. And if we can set that timeline of July thirty first, we would then submit that to the parents, release it to the public. And then we would ask them to be prepared for a turnaround answer by the fifth. That would then give us two weeks to to finalize that plan, to do class assignments, and then to be ready to rock and roll in the nineteenth.
Okay, and board members, as you comment on this, if you could just do me a favor, add one other thing here, say, do you think if if we're on this schedule or even a modified one, do you want to have a board member, board meeting, another board meeting other than the regular scheduled one in August to see the, discuss the final plan or the new plan? All right, who's up? Who wants to go first?
My question is just real quickly, a point of clarification on, does that mean that none of this information will be released to parents until the thirty first?
No, right now, based upon the the comments and the information that we have, we would want to get a message out to parents, if not tomorrow, then Monday. And to give them an update of where we're at in terms of the planning process.
And it would include the the things that have been have been approved tonight?
Correct.
Awesome.
So.
So the question I have is Dave, what is the possibility of moving up from the thirty first to the week before the twenty fourth?
I'm not optimistic in terms of having enough time to work with teachers and knowing the availability of staff and the fact that I actually want to try to be away from the office for the next week. And so that would, that would make doing all of that within that timeline very difficult. If that's what the board wants us to do, then that's what we will do. But again, I caution that if we, if we announce this plan on the twenty fourth, then we're talking about almost a month before school opens. And that opens the window for conditions to change more significantly and for it to require us to maybe be more flexible in our plan.
Seems like the information that you'd be providing after this meeting would be very helpful and informative to most folks. And give them a basis to begin their decision making about childcare for their kids and things like that. So it seems like if we're, if we're sending out this information as you're proposing it, then tomorrow, the next day, then the thirty first seems like it would be sufficient, but maybe I'm missing something. I'd like to hear from teachers and and parents if they disagree with that.
Let's give, Patrick, if you have anything first, please do. And then, and then let's hear from parents and teachers and then board members. I'm going to ask again if if you can share soon if you'd want to see the final version with a new board meeting before it gets released.
Yeah, I think it's important that as this plan is being developed, that we release as much information as possible. Because something being released on the thirty first and then only having, I mean, that's what, like, six days, five days for parents to decide. And I know that we're already familiar, the distance, you know, the different learning options. But people are still going to wait till that last moment to make a decision. And a few days is is rather difficult to make a decision like that. And then I'm seeing a lot of comments from teachers and I just have to back them up on this one. It might require a lot of work in the next couple of weeks, but we should probably have a plan as soon as possible for for teachers to start their planning.
We have a hand raised, Christina Rine, and then Beth Dawson.
Christina, you want to?
All right, maybe she can unmute. Beth, can you go ahead?
Just my thought was, I think the most helpful information that parents really need to know are specific logistics. And I know we're not working in the specifics right now, but I work for two other districts. I have children in another district as well as Gravinstein. And what's come out is a very specific delineation of a schedule. So a hybrid model example, and if your child falls in cohort A, B, or C, you know, this is what will follow. So the sooner we can get out specific logistics so parents, parents can make childcare plans, employment plans, teachers can begin planning for their own children's needs. You know, I just think the sooner the better as everybody is mimicking here, so I want to support that.
Ms. Armenia, I think, are you back? Do you have some comments, Dad?
Oh, she took her hand down.
Okay, any other comments on this number six and the timing question? Okay, so board members, anybody have a kind of heard some concerns? Does anybody have kind of a thought, a proposal for an alternative schedule? And maybe Gregory said the twenty seventh?
Said the twenty fourth, I was just asking that that's possible.
Yeah.
Dave was going to, Dave is actually looking for a chance to get out of office. He's actually working through because usually July is the time off for the superintendent, correct, Dave?
Well, you you guys have got me under contract for three hundred and sixty five days, twenty four, seven. So I'll do what you need me to do. If the board says the twenty fourth, then it will be the twenty fourth. And that, and that's what we'll work with.
So can I just get a Craig, Jennifer, Patrick, please give me your thoughts on whether you'd want to see this other plan discussed, an updated plan from the committee discussed at a full board meeting before it's released to everybody? It's kind of a, hopefully, we can do yes or no. I'm guessing y'all are going to say yes, but but I don't, what do you think?
Not sure I totally understand your question.
Do you, do you want to have another board meeting before this new plan goes to the public so so that we can see the next version? Or do you want to let the committee give input to Dave, Dave and the staff put it out? And then we have a board meeting a couple of weeks later?
My understanding was that we were going to approve the items that were, that we wanted to approve today, and that would be going out to parents. What would be going back to committee and what would become, you know, I'm not sure what that the additional step is that you're talking about.
Well, kind of reviewing further committee work, clarifying some of the questions I've brought up today.
I'm sorry, we're waiting on the committee to make changes to, based on our recommendations before they release the information. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
We have a board member on the committee, correct?
We have two.
Yeah, I think that that's, you know, we have a good idea of what we're going to be approving tonight. I don't know if another board meeting would be fruitful. I think that we're going to have to rely on the staff on this one. As far as the timeline goes, you know, the thirty first, like, we want a good plan coming out as long as we're receiving updates and people aren't just starting their planning on the thirty first, then I'm okay with the thirty first being a deadline. I know it's not ideal, but I know that the staff is also working really hard on this. So that's, that's my thought on both the additional board meeting. I don't think there's really need one. And then as far as the timeline, I think that the thirty first and the fifth, if that's what we think, Dave, that we could get a good product, something that we're going to be able to work with, that that's how long it's going to take, that's how long it's going to take.
Of course, and if we can get it done sooner, we will definitely release it sooner.
Okay, Greg, do you have an opinion you want to share on this?
Yeah, because I see the comment in here from Beth saying, please be reminded that plans and features have been provided. So a draft is there and our committee members have been asking for another meeting. Can Beth, can you unmute and actually explain what you're talking about?
So earlier on, Linda Hilton and myself, Linda Hilton has provided draft plans that she sat and created with two other colleagues from Hillcrest and attempted her very best to create one with Gravinstein or for Gravinstein, knowing she's unfamiliar with Gravinstein's ins and outs. But something from teachers has been provided to the committee. Committee members have asked if there was going to be another meeting since that last whole group, everyone was invited to attend to hash more things out, to get this progressing. You know, if, if, if you can't approve the six bullets that he's, that Mr. Rose is asking for without further meetings of the board, what are you asking him and the committee to do except to just be policed by you? The plan is there. Linda and the committee, Kate, are all ready to work it out. So let's get these six things approved. Let's look at what the teachers have provided because that's the teacher's voice and go from there. It can't be one person taking ownership. It has to be inclusive.
So you say that, and I'll be honest is that I've I've gotten multiple voices telling me today that they want different plans and different things. So if if we approve the six things, then you, there's a plan that you already have, is that already been shown today or is it just in teachers' hands?
No, it's been shared. Linda Hilton emailed it.
So that's a.
Would be if the committee is working on this and we have fifteen folks on there, most of which are teachers and administrators. Does the plan, is the, is the plan the same as what was recommended by the committee? Because the committee's gone through most items.
So to provide some clarity here, when we talk about plan, big picture, that plan has ninety different questions and ten different components, and there's lots of areas that we have been considering. In terms of synthesis to move forward, we're asking the board to consider the six items tonight that Beth just referenced.
Yeah.
In terms of the plan for the instructional model, that is that next linchpin. That is the important piece. And so Beth is correct that there has been some drafts that have been submitted. And Steve is correct that there has been email from teachers. And Beth is also correct that we need to have another committee meeting. But none of that can happen until we look at these six items as a basis for our plan moving forward.
Okay, so I'm going to just try and move this forward a little bit. I haven't heard anybody on the board say that they want another meeting before we go. I'm going to move that we approve the recommendations one, three, four, five, and six. And we do not approve the recommendation about suspending Beyond the Bell. So that would give childcare, a new childcare program for staff and the other recommendations. So that's my motion. If we have a second, we can discuss it. And if we don't have three, four votes, then we can try a different motion.
I'll second you. I think that that's a great approach and ensures that teachers have some stability with their childcare. And also, we can start looking at other options for the Beyond the Bell.
So one through five, not including two, and we're asking administration to go back to two and look at it again? Is that what you're saying there, Steve?
Yeah, one through six, not including two, and asking administration and the committee to come up with a plan B that waiting continue childcare option for parents that are not also teachers or staff. And we've got seconds and, yeah, other clarification or thoughts or discussion?
So just my discussion piece on that, it would be my request of the board. So just my discussion piece on that, it would be my request of the board to not send that item back to committee, that the board either says they're going to approve the recommendation of the committee or that they're going to tell us to open beyond the bell for all staff. I would, I would prefer that as a motion as direction for the staff so that we can focus on the instructional plan instead of spending more time talking about a question that we've approached from every different angle that we possibly can. And right now we don't see a way of doing that unless the board tells us that we have the authority to hire more staff, open the classrooms with the appropriate spacing and go ahead and do that program.
Okay, so just to clarify, is, is our, is beyond the bell already opened on staff or was it last year? I mean theoretically, could any of staff person could have signed up for that?
They did, yes.
So, so then you're saying you'd rather just, all right.
I have to just clarify something because I, I'm on that committee and we literally talked about it one time. So I, I'm just, for me, it's, I keep hearing you say we spent months and months and months talking about this. I know the, the teachers have submitted a document that has their, their clear request. But I don't believe it's fair to say that the committee has rehashed this and thought of all the options because I've been on that committee and I have not seen that.
And so just to clarify, I didn't say that the committee has spent months talking about this. As staff, we have talked about this for months in terms of the alternatives and the things that we can possibly do about opening beyond the bell for all of our families.
So quick question here, something that Dave just said, I think it actually has a solution to the problem. So Dave said that if we approve opening beyond the bell up more than just to teachers, children, then we need to be prepared to hire additional staff to handle it. Is that correct what you said, Dave?
That's correct.
Right, and I'm, that's great, yeah.
That I, that I think that I'd like to amend your motion, Steve, to include number two with the addition of opening beyond the bell up to the school and approving to direct Dave to hire more staff to handle it.
I'll second that.
There's kind of two questions, just now that we're kind of in some weeds on this, I think there's two questions. One is who's eligible for after school stuff? Is it just staff's kids or is it everybody's kids? And then the second one, is it beyond the bell or is it something that's more just childcare, right? Because so I think what they've, if I'm catching this right, in number three, they're saying we're going to stop beyond the bell and then staff will have a childcare thing. There's not necessarily exactly the beyond the bell with the thing. So it seems like we want to have everybody be able to access whatever the program is and maybe not demand to be beyond the bell or something else.
So the amended motion would be that we would strike number three because that's no longer necessary. And number two would be altered to say the board direction is to open beyond the bell with authority to hire more staff.
As needed, yeah.
That, that would be the amended motion.
Yeah, I mean, that works. I think that captures what Greg was saying. Greg, does that capture what you're saying?
Yes.
And Jen, you seconded that. So does that capture what you want, we're supporting?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll withdraw that my original motion, Greg's motion fixes it or we can just treat it as an amendment to it, either way. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Please.
So as an employee of the district and a parent of a student, I don't really have a choice as to whether or not I can allow my child to go to be on the bell because I'm going to be required to be on campus. So now I'm going to be sending my child instead of with a group of 40 kids to ensure that we are in safe numbers and no infections and things like that to now a group of a potential 92.
Well, we, we don't know about that. It could be, it could be three different programs in three different classrooms like Jen recommended. We're just saying that parents of teachers and parents of staff and parents of, who are not, of kids that don't work at the district are going to have the same options. So that can, that we, we understand that we want to not have, you know, 90 people in the same room. But, and, and that's something, you know, there's a couple of weeks at least to sort out.
And Beth, let me help, Beth, let me help clarify there. As we get this directive from the board to be have the ability to hire more staff, we would use the same type of strategies that we're using for the classroom cohorts. So for instance, if we could have, you know, 11 kids from the same class, we would have them with one staff member and we would have that group repeat so that we minimize any type of cohort mix. And that will be our strategy as we approach this.
However, and I appreciate that explanation, Dave, I do. And that gives me some assurance that Mabel is safe. However, I still don't have a choice. So I would like to be told or that I will have the choice to keep Mabel in my classroom at the end of my working day. Because I don't, the choice is being removed from me as a working parent.
Yeah, Beth, we, we would clearly give staff the freedom to be professional in that situation and still continue to, to meet their work requirements, but also care for their children. That, that's the, the humanistic approach. Obviously, we do that.
Carrie, and then Will Deets.
I, I just want to also mention that regardless of what we do with beyond the bell, it's going to look different than in the past. We still, we, we currently have one classroom space that is dedicated to be on the bell. We don't have empty classrooms. We already are repurposing our multi-purpose room for other things. So we don't have the capacity to serve 100 kids if we have to do, ensure any social distancing. So it's not just the staffing issue, it's also a facilities issue. Even if we have outdoor play, we cannot, you know, and we're using the tables, there's not a, there's not the possibility of doing the same program like we've done in the past. So if, if we are to move forward with opening it up to a non-staff members' children, there absolutely will be a cap, would have to be a cap. And it's, and it can't just be solved by adding another staff member. Classrooms are being utilized by teachers still continuing with distance learning. And we're, we're limited with our, with our facility space. So it isn't just going to be solved by additional staff, by hiring new people. It, it obviously it can help, but that's not the only factor that went into that decision.
Okay, so we've been talking for about two and a half hours. We've got a motion and a second. Patrick, do you have any comments or other thoughts?
Yeah, my, my final thought on it is I'm, I'm okay with this motion. You know, it's, the staff has been working on this, the teachers have been working on this. We have to take all of this into consideration. And it's also going to require some sacrifice from our parent community. You know, some people might use beyond the bell when they might not need to. Like I would love to be able to use beyond the bell to make my work productivity a little bit more efficient. But I'm not going to be doing that unless I absolutely have to. So it should just be stressing that when we, I mean, Carrie, what you just said, you know, we have limited spaces. People are all going to have to do their part. I feel for you guys trying to get this, this plan going, but I guess that's just my.
So let's do a roll call vote.
Gregory, I.
Jennifer, I.
Steve's an I, okay. Okay, great. That's a lot of good info and a lot of, I think there's some good input for committees to think about as they go forward. General, we're on number, well, general action items, six B. Do we have anything else to look at in terms of supporting distant learning and other related essential services?
Yes, we do. So as we're looking at the likelihood of having multiple students open the year with distance learning, and as we're looking at the likelihood of some type of hybrid model that needs to be in place where students are spending some time at home and some time at school. And then we also look at the possibility that we could be moved back into stage two or stage one or get some form of health order that says that we have to go back on full distance learning. We know that our current laptops and the materials that we have for students are not going to be sufficient to be able to handle the bandwidth of the, the stress and rigor that we're going to be doing as we enter into the fall. Carrie and Will have taken a look at the supplies, the stock, also the capability of the current devices that we have. They've looked at the new devices that are out there. They've talked with teachers about the best models going forward. And we would like to make a purchase of approximately 660 new devices for use and checkout for our students. This enables us to go one to one with our lower grades that had been sharing devices. It allows us to continue with a checkout program. We will still be offering parents an insurance policy for replacement for devices. This will give us common licenses and common platforms for all those devices out there, which helps us with our filter and then the apps that teachers want to do. It will provide that point of consistency for us. The total price tag looking at this is approximately $230,000. And this includes the site licenses and all of the different devices that we would like to purchase.
You know, my, my computer's older than my kids, but, but, and we just bought new computers a couple of years back. How, how old are the devices we're replacing if we do this?
They, they range in age from being one year to five to six years. They, they've been here in different generations with different wear and tear.
Okay, so for board members, any, if anybody has a concern about it, bring it up and otherwise I entertain a motion.
We have comments.
I'll just very quickly share the devices that we're replacing are the silver Toshiba's, the ones that were sent home and it's the connectivity, it's pixel screen, cameras, all of those things. On the average, they're seven years old. They no longer make that model, so we can't replace that exact model. So it is an upgrade of, to a model that is much more, it's still it's a Chromebook, but much more user-friendly and capable for everything that we're asking of them.
Okay, so for board members, does anybody have a concern about this purchase? If, if so, bring it up. Otherwise, you know, let's just move forward.
Steve? Actually, no, I, I think it also too, at some point, we have to discuss the teachers, teachers' equipment as well. I think especially if we're talking about broadcasting, we need to look at webcams and new devices for our teachers to make sure that if they're being asked to do two different models of teaching that we have the best equipment possible for our teachers to have too.
And I'll add, we've already started investigating those document cameras. The purchase does allow for a device for each of the teachers as well.
There's going to be a lot of purchases coming up to help meet the needs of this remote learning environment and the campus and a lot of additional costs that are probably not factored into the budget. Would it be possible to get some kind of, fit this into some kind of perspective? So we can see how this impacts in addition to all the other proposed purchases? Not that I'm not entirely in support of this purchase. I just like to understand how this fits in with the rest of the purchases that we need to make and how that will impact our overall budget going forward.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question, Jennifer. We, we have budgeted for the materials and supplies that we will need going forward. We've already made purchases of masks, cleaning supplies, sanitizers. All of those have been covered within the current budget. As we're looking forward, we know that there is going to be some, some cost for professional development and training as, as we open the year. But other than that, this appears right now with the information we have to be the only major purchase that we're going to need to put our program together. We don't anticipate a, any other major costs. We have masks, we have shields, we have storage containers. All, all of those things that are the infrastructure piece of this moving forward, those are already accounted for.
And they were.
I'm sorry.
I, I was seeing if anybody else had one. I, I didn't actually have a motion.
I just wanted to follow up on that. So you, I just heard Mr. Deets mentioned a bunch of other technology. And I noticed on the teacher survey that a significant portion, about 20 of the, of the 38 teachers or 19 of the 38 teachers had connectivity issues from working, when working from home. I'm just, I'm trying to think of all the.
Right. And Jennifer, that, that's the thing that we've considered going through this. And so in order for us to effectively engage teachers so that those connectivity issues, we want teachers to come in and work from their classroom using our filter and our devices because we are no longer in a shelter in place order. So teachers can do that work from their classroom where those connectivity issues will be eliminated. And if we're troubleshooting and we need our techs, then it's right there instead of trying to solve 20 different types of problems in 20 different types of households.
Yeah, so I want to take a minute, can you hang on one second? I just want to do a time check here. So I want to remind board members that we do have a special presentation in closed session. And I think it'll be a courtesy to that person to have that happen by 8:30. So my, my intention is if we have a motion, we pass it soon, great. But otherwise I want to adjourn to closed session, shut down this and then we can welcome people back and we can continue this debate about computers and other technology after that. But I, I really think it's, it would be better for us to hear that presentation while we're a little bit fresh and before it gets too late for them.
So Dave, I need the amount again, so the motion can be made.
The, the amount not to exceed $230,000.
To purchase computer equipment?
And my question is still outstanding, which is what is that in context to the rest of the purchases that we've made for this? And how does that fit into our overall budget? I would like to request that you, we get some kind of statement from staff for the next board meeting on the ongoing accumulation of purchases, just so we can understand how it fits in the budget. Not that we shouldn't do it. I just want to understand how that fits into our budget.
Did somebody catch that in the minutes?
Yes, so I'll move to approve computer equipment purchase not to exceed 230,000 with requests for district to provide additional computer needs at next meeting.
And I'll second.
Okay, and I want to add to the minutes that next month, come back with some kind of plan for moving on. Does the computers you're putting out of service to either donate to kids that need them or computer recyclers or something else and come up with a plan for that? So any other discussion from board members on the motion that's been seconded? Okay, so let's vote.
Gregory's, I.
Jennifer, I.
Patrick, you with us and you're muted, I think.
Patrick, I.
Okay, Steve's an, I. Okay, so we're going to adjourn to.
Steve, we have two more items, Steve.
I'm not, as part of the distance learning and other related essential services?
No, we have item C and item D.
Okay, so I guess that's on alternative agenda. So does anybody on the board oppose, oppose to going to closed session now, listening to the presentation that we've scheduled and then coming back and hearing the other motions, the other items?
Question real quick on that one then, Steve, is, is there any disagreement on others or can we pass others to now?
Honestly, I don't know what they are, but.
The, the bylaw which we, basically where we'll take a pay and fee for candidates and the announcement of the election, which doesn't change at all. That's pretty much, we have to do that.
Probably, probably no controversy.
So I'll move that we approve the amended board bylaw 9220. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And. I just want to confirm, these are posted properly yet in her Brown Act? Is that true?
That's correct. They were, it was in a revised agenda that went out Monday morning.
Any discussion? Okay, I'm saying I.
Correction, Tuesday morning, sorry.
Gregory's, I.
Jennifer, I.
Patrick, I.
Okay, great. So you did, covered both, yes, Greg?
So now I will move that we approve resolution number 200709, which is the announcement of the elections to be held.
Yes, you want to review this one for everybody, Dave?
This is a routine annual type of. This is a routine annual type of event. It's not annual, it's biannual. It allows us as a district to participate in the county's consolidated election. It would typically be a consent item on the agenda. However, a roll call vote is mandatory because it is a resolution.
And we're not changing the way we've handled the elections in the past, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, I'll, I move to approve the resolution.
Greg has already moved.
Yep, sorry.
Steve's seconded.
Yep. Any other discussion? Patrick, Jen? All in favor? I'm an I.
Patrick.
Here's an I.
All right. So I think we're going to move to closed session. Are there any comments on items in closed session?
I have a comment on whether or not the staff needs to spend time on the donation and I left it in the chat. Thanks.
Okay, any comments on items in closed session? Okay, so we're going to adjourn to closed session. Appreciate everyone's patience and input and work on the committees and jump off so we can, the rest of us can finish our meeting and go to bed early.
Virginia, Virginia, thanks for hanging out. Just, just hang on and we'll, we'll have you in in just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Guys, I do regret having to say this, but I, I have a very early morning. So I may have to hop off. We don't lose a quorum, right? If, if I'm not present for this.
We have a quorum.
And I know, mean no disrespect to Virginia and her presentation. I do apologize for this. I just have a very early morning.
That's okay. I understand.
Thanks, Dave, Steve and Jen and Gregory.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Talk to you guys soon. And Dave, thank you for all your work on this. I know you've been.
You're, you're welcome. It's, it's very challenging and our students are worth it and it's, it's great working with our staff.
Also, if you're not here for closed session, can you please step off so we can get to closed session?
Yep, bye.
Yeah, Rach, we got two more.
Three.
Miss, there's, uh, two more. Okay.
Oh, who stood out one on?
Okay, so we're in closed session. We have just the five of us now. Virginia, thanks for joining us. The item first, it's agendized as, you know, student discipline, even though really what we're talking about is kind of present, some sharing from Ms. Rach, I hope I pronounced it right.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. So what I want to say before we go into it, and this is really based, the way I look at this is we're not, you know, revisiting the decision that was made by the board in the past. We're not trying to, you know, justify or explain what we're doing is kind of gathering, hearing your perspective so that when this board makes similar decisions in the past, they have some more kind of data to work with, some more experience, some more story that informs future decisions. And if, if does that, if that makes, sounds good to Jen and Greg and Mr. Rose and then let's, let's jump in. And, and I'm hoping, you know, you think what I talked to you about is kind of a maybe 10 minutes or so, and then we'd go with questions, discussion as, as appropriate. Let's shoot for that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate all of you letting me speak. I know there's a lot going on and I I don't envy any of you for having to deal with that. But basically, yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about, my son was a student at Hillcrest in 2017 and 18 and he was suspended in April of 2018 for potentially selling pot to another student on campus. And they had suspended him so that they could conduct an investigation. And over the time of that investigation, which took extremely long, much longer than I think it was necessary. My son had like a mental breakdown and ended up in the psych ward and he was in the psych ward for 16 days. And that was for cutting and first attempting suicide. So after that, you know, we came and got back and we had the hearing and he was, ended up getting expelled. And he was sent to a continuation school called Almerosa, which is in Santa Rosa. And I think Greg is the only person on the board who even questioned if that would be a good choice, considering it was a seventh through 12th grade school and all of those kids had been expelled from other schools. So his point of view was maybe it's not the best choice to put a child into that environment. Especially considering that that was really like a first major offense. I argued at the time that he be sent to the continuation school at Hillcrest campus. I also wanted to look into alternative options because of his mental health. Jennifer Schwen insisted that Almerosa was the only choice unless we did homeschool, which wasn't good with my son's, son's mental health. So he ended up at Almerosa. He was the only seventh grader there. It was seventh through 12th. All of the kids were much, um, they were much worse behaved. A lot of them had been expelled for much more serious things. A lot of them had been in and out of the juvenile hall. And, you know, the first few days that Elijah was there, he was terrified because everybody was just trying to beat him up and steal his things. Then eventually he put on that facade that he was super tough so that he could fit in and not get messed with, which led him to eating Xanax and drugs and codeine and getting introduced to all these things that never, I don't think if he had been at the continuation school at Hillcrest, he would have been exposed to. And that's really just continued down a horrible path for us. We've had, you know, a really hard time and he really hasn't finished a school year since, you know, he would, he would have finished this year except for COVID. So I just really fought with Jennifer Schwen about not letting that be the only option. And one of my things was if any of you have ever gone to that school to take a look. So I just.
I have not, yeah.
You know, I just think my son needed support. I think coming out of a mental hospital, he probably should have been referred into a school called Journey Academy, which is in Sebastopol and has never had a child ever referred to that school from this West County area. It's all Santa Rosa district's kids who go there. But it has all the support that kids need. Cause I know it's limited around here. I know that there's very limited places for kids to go who need that additional support. So I guess a big concern for me is how do you guys, we're going to move forward, especially in this time, kids are really struggling with mental health. You know, and I think it's really important. And I know one thing that Jennifer Schwen told me was mental health does not affect academic academics. You know, she, she didn't tie the two together and I just don't understand that there's any way that you can't tie the two together.
So our new superintendent actually specialized in dealing with some of the issues that we had to deal with back then with, with Ms. Schwen. So that's actually especially as we actually are looking to bring on someone who can work with mental health. So there have been some changes here as well since Jennifer Schwen's case.
Yeah.
Let's leave it at that.
Okay. And I did work with David Rose last year. Elijah did end up going back to Hillcrest for a portion of eighth grade. And that we did set up some things going into the school. Unfortunately, Sam, who was the mental health provider, besides being spread between the two schools, she was in a car accident, so she wasn't available a lot. And so there was nobody replacing her to be there to support while she was gone. So there's just, you know, these things are, I just find to be really important, you know, just, just going through what I've gone through with my son and feeling like there could have been additional supports, you know, like, and I understand that funds are probably a thing. You know, there's not enough funds to send kids to these special schools, but how can we make that change? You know, like, how can we put kids' mental health first and get them into the places that can support them? Because Hillcrest maybe wasn't the right place for Elijah. But where was it? Where was it? How come there isn't an option?
So Virginia, I just want to share with you really briefly, thank you for being so patient and for sharing this with the board. And I want to let you know that this board is incredibly receptive to what you're saying. They have spent a lot of time supporting all of the different mental health components and things that we want to put in place in this district since Elijah's experience that happened at, at the time it happened. Not only are they supporting me in terms of providing direct mental health training for our staff, but they've also gone the extra mile to say, we actually are going to have a mental health clinician that's going to be part of our staff. Sam's support is great. Sam is wonderful. Sam is an academic counselor. Sam is not a mental health support specialist. But the board members you're talking to have been very instrumental in terms of supporting some real infrastructure change for our district as we move forward.
And, and I'll just add to that, I didn't really say it earlier tonight, but I've said it in the past, like in this COVID pandemic piece, especially when people are sheltering in place, I'm, I'm like more concerned than ever about the social emotional side. My, one question I have for you to clarify is you said it took a long time to do the investigation. Can you remind us about how long we're talking about? And you're talking about investigation on the part of our district administration, right?
Right, correct. Yeah, because there was no proof, you know, that he, so it was about, well, I think it would have been a total of three weeks, but my son was in the hospital that, you know, I said that it's got, you know, he had to get out of the hospital and then directly after his hospital visit, we went into the expulsion hearing.
Yeah, I, now I don't want to dig in too deep into the, the case. But yeah, there was, there was a different principal, different superintendent, and some of what we were told were requirements kind of led us to, to the decision we came to. So Dave is coming in with a different perspective. And some of the board members also have different perspectives on how to deal with this since that, that time. Jen is actually one of the specialists in some of this, so.
And I just want to thank you for sharing this with us. I know it took a lot of your time and emotional energy. And I appreciate that you're willing to share your perspective because it's important for us as a board to understand the impact of the decisions we make and how important it is to find the right placement for students so that they do benefit from it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I'm, part of the take home for me out of this is I think we should ask our staff to give a little presentation on Journey Academy for, I hate to say, but there probably will be a next time when there's an expulsion hearing. And also that idea, you know, your question, have we visited Almerosa? I think it might be a field trip that board members want to take, or we've been asked Sonoma County Office of Education to set up a, a little field trip there so people know what they're voting on more in the future.
But I really, oh, I don't want to speak over you. I just wanted to say I really trust Dave's guidance in this going forward. I think he's got a lot of experience and a great perspective and I know he's going to take that into consideration. So I think we're in much better hands going forward, just because of his long tenured experience in this field.
Yeah, no, definitely. I would agree with that for sure. But yeah, I know, and that school doesn't have any sort of emotional or mental support, you know, and that was one of the big things. It's really just a place for kids to go who can't go anywhere else, you know? And Elijah was exposed to so much stuff and it has not been, I actually can't even have him around here anymore because of the kids that he met there who are gang related now. And last time he was here, he had them pick him up and take him away and I couldn't find him for, you know, so he's not even allowed to be in my home anymore. You know, which is sad. So now he lives with his dad, but we're still trying to figure out for next year. And Hana Boys School is a really good school that maybe you guys could recommend to troubled kids going into high school. You know? So maybe just like looking into more resources, like even restorative justice, things like that, that can come in and teach the kids how to deal with their emotions. I think, think, because eventually what I did is send Elijah to the wilderness and he was there for 80 days. And it was amazing. But not everybody, pardon?
Sent him where?
The Wilderness Program.
Yes, it was called New Vision, but it's the most expensive, you know, it's like a college education. So it's not, that's something that everybody can do. So it's, I'm just trying to find ways that we can support the kids more in our own, in our own schools.
Virginia, tell Elijah we're rooting for him. Please, please pass along our best.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
And thank you. Thanks for sharing and helping us and pushing us to continue to do a better job.
Thank you. No, I care about these kids, you know, and I, since we've moved to Sebastopol, no matter what school he was in, he just kept getting pushed out. And he's a great kid. He's a little bit rambunctious and he doesn't fit the perfect Sebastopol mold. But he is a great kid and he never believed it since we've been here, you know? But really sad about that. But I just want, I just want all kids to be accepted and encouraged and supported. So. But I do appreciate your time and I do know Dave Rose is doing a great job. I appreciate it, all he did for us, so. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, thanks for joining us and you know where to find us and we wish you the best and your son, of course, the best.
Awesome. Well, thanks. Have a good night.
Thanks, Virginia. Good night.
Okay, so will anybody want to comment anymore on that or should we just get moved to the?
Okay, just as an FYI, the, the journey program is, it's a non-public school setting, so it wouldn't be open for referral for a general education student. It would take a student with an IEP and there is an entry protocol that we need to be in place. We can't just simply say, hey, the student, go to Journey. That, that's not how it works. It is, it is through an IEP process.
Thanks for explaining that. Okay, anything on administrator review?
No, I just, again, I feel very lucky to be working with the administrative and leadership team that we have here.
Yeah, and I'll, thanks. And I'll just, um, I think Dave and I talked last Thursday at our meeting. I think he's going to be coming with some, a proposal around kind of overtime compensation, I think, for, for people that are in extra days. And I said, you know, I think that's going to be, needs to be commented on in public session, which he did briefly. And so anyways, and I'll say, Dave, you know, I mean, I talked to you last week, I said, you know, what I would, in general, if you've got complicated stuff to bring the board, if you can give us a few things to focus the conversation on, and you did that tonight, I think. Maybe it could have gone a little smoother, but I appreciate, uh, thanks for doing that.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Anything else on the agenda we need to cover?
Just a, a quick negotiations update. We had some outstanding items that were still there with COVID and with the move to the different formats that we're looking at. We decided to table some items, so we have some language changes that we can incorporate into a draft that will be coming to the board in August, if I can get that done. And that, that would be the plan, is that we would, we would be adopting that language.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. And I move to reconvene to open session with no reportable items? I mean, do we need to report that we had a presentation we didn't put on?
No.
Yeah, all right. No reportable items and move to adjourn to open session? Or reconvene? Okay, so I.
I.
What are we voting on?
Just to reconvene to open session.
We don't have to vote on that.
There's, yeah, there's, there's no action here. The only action you would take is if you want a motion to, to adjourn.
Let's adjourn.
Yep. So Steve, I'll have some documents for you to sign. And Greg, I don't think there's any for you in this batch, but I'll. any for you in this batch, but I'll double check.
Okay, so Steve motion, Jen seconded, vote was all for 3-0. Patrick left before closed session.
Yeah, and I'm, I forget the term, but either quarantine and or self-isolating, so maybe you want to leave those in the mailbox and run to the stairs and I'll do something like that.
Okay, I'll figure something like that out.
Okay, thanks everyone, that was the longest one in a little while, but we covered some good stuff.
Not surprising that it took long, it's, it's some really critical issues.
Hey, longest is at nine o'clock, than what we used to do.
Oh my god.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we had 39 people on the call, so I think we did pretty well.
We made it to 49.
Oh, did we?
No, at one point we had 51.
Yeah, there we go.
And Dave and I joked about whether we were going to hit 50 or not.
Yeah, then we made it, yep. All right, you guys.
See you guys later.
All right, good night.
Thank you.
Oh, and Dave, don't delete that recording, I'm going to need it.
I was going to ask you if you could share the recordings.
I'll see if I can figure out a way to do that. This is my first recorded Zoom meeting, so now I'm going to be interested to see what it is and what I can do with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet, see you guys, bye.
Bye bye.